Benefit unit public hearing. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. And as we rise for the pledge of allegiance, we would ask everyone to remove cover. Please, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Just to go over a couple of things this evening, please silence your phones, if you would. Put them on vibrate or silence them for us. Also, the folks that are sitting by these black barriers, so to speak, we ask that you go around. They're there for a reason, so that if we have people in line, we don't have issues. So, we would ask that you do that. And I don't think I have anything else at this point in time. But we do want to thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate and look forward to hearing from you tonight. With that, I would ask for Mr. Flores to do the changes to the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had three items added to the original agenda. We added resolution packet that outlines option number one. We revised that again today, just to make sure we updated the max rates for the fire assessment section. And then also added the backup material, I believe it was from the March 21st workshop, where we went through the fire strategic plan, the financial plan, and also their operational plan.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the ch-
Yes. Thank you. That last section was, we added the March 21st workshop items that were related to the fire department, their strategic plan, operational plan, and also their financial plan. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the changes. We're with the original resolution packet, resolution packet option two, and then the revised resolution packet option two, because that's all available online, including the backup material.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. And with that, then, we will go to citizens' input on agenda items. At this time, I do have cards. I just have to know which color. Okay. Very good. All right. My, I'm going to name three people, so you guys can start moving forward. And each time somebody moves forward, I'll name three more. Our first three are David Grossman, Anthony Lucano, and Phil Jacobus. Please come forward. Yeah, they get five minutes. You get five minutes, ladies and gentlemen.
It says three minutes on the agenda.
I'm sorry, it's three, it's three minutes here. It's five minutes on the, on the public hearings. Sorry, it's three minutes. Please state your name for record, please.
Certainly, sir. My name is David Grossman, a resident here of the county. So, I had an opportunity to review the report from Fitch and Associates, all 374 pages. And what it determines is that your current EMS is meeting standards. It's actually reasonably well-aligned within the benchmarks provided. So, to add for additional funding for a organization that's already meeting standards seems to be ineffective, okay? Second of all, for fire rescue, fire rescue recommendations on, I think it was 313 or 295 of the report, says that you could use an additional fire station. That would only increase your response time a little less than 2%. Right now, you have a response time that's 1 minute 21 seconds over the benchmark. So, by adding additional fire, additional station, you'd increase that to, down to the 10-minute benchmark is where they like to get. The question is, where are you going to put that station? Even if you decide you want to spend the money to allocate it, whose house is that going to buy? Which house? Where in the county? You've got a lot of urban area you have to cover. So, the progressive plan that you have in place works very well. And your report actually has a way for you to maintain this 2% or 90% benchmark. And I ask this, that, I ask the commissioners to really read this report, especially the recommendations on how they suggest you should employ your personnel. Understand, fire is of an important thing. What that doesn't take into account is the second meeting this afternoon, and that is your additional impacts from your expansions of Sunseeker Resort and the influx of new people. That will address in the second meeting this afternoon. That report is actually very well-founded, and I'm going to ask that, for those that haven't read the report, although it is voluminous, the recommendations should be heeded, because it is rather well-done from a standpoint. And I've been in municipal planning and examination of expenditures for a lot of years. They did a very good report for you, and you should heed its recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Anthony Lucano. You put, first time here. Say your address and all that.
No, no, just your name is all we need for the record, sir.
Okay. My concern is probably not part of your agenda for today. I'm finding out it's mostly your agenda for today was about the fire departments and stuff like that. But I was here, I wanted to come here, and I've only been here in this county for like four and a half, five years now. So, with the storm that we recently went through, I had some concerns, okay? And the only place I could bring them is, is here. So, if this is not part of your agenda, I will gladly sit down, but-
Can you still tell me what your, your issue is?
My issue is that I just got my recent tax bill, and I noticed that the trash pickup is going up in, in cost.
Okay.
And I'm wondering why that is.
Okay, then, that is not part of this agenda.
Okay.
And I think we probably have somebody here that might be able to assist you on the side.
Not a problem.
Okay, so if somebody is here that can address that for him, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a good evening.
Yes, sir, you too.
Hi, my name is Phil Jacobus. I live on Asian Drive. Thirteen years ago, my wife and I came down here, we bought a home, first home in Deep Creek. And the second year down, we snowboarded one year. Second year down, I come down, and there's this big sign, as you come up San, or, yeah, Deep Creek Boulevard, saying that we're going to get new sidewalks if the sales tax is approved, the one penny sale, additional, 1%, excuse me, additional sales tax. So, I thought, well, that's pretty good. So, they did put the sidewalk in right in front of our house. It was great. A lot of people used the sidewalk. And then they continued on, but they stopped Deep Creek Boulevard at rail. And I couldn't understand why they didn't keep going, other than it costs money to do that, I know. But the sales tax was approved. I thought it was kind of a bait, yeah, and we wouldn't need your vote on this thing. We all did. And then I got involved with the MSBU. I've been on MSBU for 10 years for Deep Creek, still am. And each year that they proposed a sidewalk, I've questioned why we can't fund that, that last bit on Deep Creek Boulevard, and the one on Up to Navigator in Section 23 out of the sales tax receipts. Why does it have to be just an MSBU thing? It never was before. You either paid for it with gas tax, which we can't do if it's not a gas tax role, but you certainly could have funded, funded this with sales tax receipts. I finally, after a lot of pressure from folks on Nextdoor particularly, and some of the people in Section 20, voted for it. We got to have it done. But I really thought it could have been funded differently. And that's my last hurrah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next speaker is Kat Pellegrino. And then I have Sharon Peneo and Karina Metz.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Kat Pellegrino. So, this is for the MSBU, not the budget?
Correct.
My budget one is longer. Okay, great. So, this is going to be short and sweet. Basically, as far as the firefighters go, they deserve great pay. The higher echelon, on the other hand, aren't the ones running into the building, and they're probably paid too much. And budget-wise, you need to cut the budget and be more responsible with the budget. That's my personal opinion on that. Thanks.
This is not going to be as well-done as I thought it was going to be, because I thought I had five minutes. So, I'm going to be editing as I go, so we may, you know, I may get a little tongue-tied. Please forgive me.
And please-
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, citizens of Charlotte County.
And please speak into the microphone, so everybody can hear.
I thought they could.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I looked up, there was an awful lot of conversation in the last meeting about this, the last regular meeting, and a lot of reporting and discussion about response time and admonishment of the population about how we don't care about response time. So, I thought I should look it all up. So, here are the stats. Charlotte County's response time does not seem on its face to be very good. Charlotte County's response time is 9.92 minutes year 2021 to 2022. Lee County's response time, even though their calculations are a little bit different, because their structure is a little bit different, is 8.59. That's their strike, their strike goal, and they hover around that time, they told me, also for the same year. Sarasota unfortunately gave me 22 to 23, which wasn't fair, because it doesn't, didn't take into account Hurricane Ian. And theirs for this past year, well, this, up until now, is approximately six minutes. Hernando County, they're at approximately 6.68 minutes. And I'd like to take, even though this doesn't sound good on its face, I really want to thank the firefighters and emergency response people for the excellent job that they've done, because you're going to see in, right here, how great it really is. You see, Charlotte County has 858 square miles. And let's see, Lee County has 1,212 square miles. Sarasota County has 725 square miles, and Hernando has 472.97 miles. Now, here's where the crux of the matter is. Charlotte County has 236.20 people per square mile. Now, again, 236.20. Lee has 678.59 people per square mile. Sarasota has 637.64 people per square mile. And Hernando has almost double Charlotte County, not triple, like the last two, 800, 483.44 people per square mile, and this is the projected rate according to the United States Census Bureau. Now, when you do the math on this and the actual response time, it means that, it breaks down to this, Charlotte County is actually getting there 65% faster than the other counties.
Can you wrap up, because your time has expired?
Okay, just, this is, these are quick.
Yes, ma'am.
65% quicker than, than Lee County, getting there, let's see, approximately 51% quicker than Sarasota County. And they're getting about three-quarters.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry.
All right.
I gave you some extra time, but I do have to cut you off.
The point is, when you calculate all of it-
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, and we appreciate that. My next speaker is Karina Metz. And then I have David Clark and David Ferguson. Karina Metz? Okay, thank you. I'll move that. And David Clark? Okay, very good. And then David Ferguson and John B.
David Clark, thank you for being here, taking the time to listen to us. Sorry, I have a little bit of a dry mouth, I had some surgery, but I'm here about the-
Get a little closer. Get a little closer to, to that for us. There you go.
I'm here to talk about the Suncoast Waterway increase from $700 to $1,500. So, they did a dredge there about 10 or 12 years ago, and it was $700,000. And it worked out to be about $700 per unit. There's about 100 units in that area. Now, the proposal is to do another dredge, because some of the areas have filled in, and it's going to go up to $1,500 a year over the next seven years. First of all, I'd like to propose that we postpone or not pass the increase at this time. Since the last meeting, or since the postcards went out, there's been a lot of interest in the neighborhood, and we've now got some people that are willing to be on an advisory board. I think there's a lot of issues that need to be worked out before we know what the cost might be. It looks like the problem areas are in the interior canals, not the part that goes out into the river, which doesn't really make sense. To me, it almost sounds like silt runoff, and we probably should figure out why it filled in before we spend more money to redredge it. Another reason I think we should postpone it, so we can better understand, you know, $1,500 per unit, there's some lots in the area that, way back when they developed it, they were 60-foot lots. So, a lot of the properties are really a lot and a half, and then the, so they take three 60-foot lots and make two 90s. Right now, some people are paying for one and a half units, because they own a vacant lot that's a 160 and a 30. I don't think it's fair for them to pay $2,200 when it's still only one billable piece of property. So, that's one issue. There's other issues with trees and vegetation that's overgrown the canals that make them not really useful, so. And then back to the, you know, what needs to be done. When you look at it, it's only about 2,600 feet of the 7,000. And I think if you kind of work out the math, it works out to be like, you know, $35,000 per 100-foot lot, which just seems kind of high. If the, if the cost to dredge right now is inflated, because inflation and you can't get people to do it and things like that, maybe we can put this off and get a better price later when we haven't had storm after storm after storm. So, those are the issues I have, and I just think for that reason, we should postpone the increase until we can better understand and get more people involved. You know, when they sent out the postcards, I think they got less than 10 people back that said they were for it. So, and this, this item doesn't benefit anybody besides the people that live there, so it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people for the increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Great timing. Mr. Ferguson? Please come forward, sir.
David Ferguson. I'm right behind him with Suncoast Waterways, and Ken knows who I am. Anyways, we, he says about everything we'd like to postpone it on the, on the decision of this right now. And really, it gets down to, there's about 100 lots, 100 pieces of property in there. Approximately 50, there's about 50, 40 houses in that area. The rest of them are all empty lots. And a lot of the canals already have, are very deep canals on the west side of the waterways right now, where the dredging wouldn't even be necessary at all. And there's, so we have at least 50% of the lots that are empty, no one that takes care of them. And we have a big problem with the overgrowth in, in the canals for boats to pass in and out. If they were doing dredging, what are we going to gain from it? Unless the, the empty lots are trimmed back also. So, we, I just like to, the maintenance is what we need done to it, and we don't need the whole thing re-dredged. I think we just need a touch-up and maintenance in certain areas of the canals. That's about all I got.
Very good, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John? And would you state your full name for me, sir?
Yes. Good evening. My name is John B. I'm a Charlotte County property owner residing in District 4. I'd like to start off the public comment by expressing sincere appreciation for the first responders within the state of Florida, and specifically Charlotte County. These men and women choose to serve the public at times, stare the ugly reality of people directly in the face. I attended the July 17th meeting with intentions of expressing my opinion regarding the fire tax increase. I was met with a sea of citizens, to what I only assumed and later confirmed, were planning to do the same. As I entered the building and walked through the packed corridor, past the overflow room, towards the entrance to the packed chambers, I could overhear and feel the matching disdain reverberating through the crowd. After three hours and five minutes of public comment took place, I unequivocally felt like my position was heard. It was now time for our elected representatives to speak on what they had just retained over the last three hours and five minutes. The result was appalling. I distinctly remember a commissioner advising the masses to please refrain from regurgitating the same message if at all possible. Clearly, it needed to be repeated. The answer was no. Forty-eight people spoke that evening, not including Kim Ferguson's proxy votes of the 85 people in the corner. Out of the 48 people, 46 people expressed opposition to the proposed increase. The answer was no. Out of the 48 people who spoke, only one person did not express their opinion either way. That was Paul Pope from the property preservers office. Out of the 47 remaining people who spoke, one person expressed approval, proposed tax increase, Chad, the Firemen's Union rep. If you remove the one clearly biased yes from the Firemen's Union rep and Paul, the tax collector Switzerland stance, 100% of the people spoke and said no. In my short time on this earth, I've acquired the ability to read people quite well through speech patterns, mannerisms, and eye contact. A wise woman once taught me, a person will tell you their intentions if you watch and listen closely. It appeared to me, all of you entered those chambers prepared to vote just as you did. It was almost as if the people's positions didn't hold any merit. Charlotte County Administration Code 3.05, the Budget and Administration Services section, I quote, "Charlotte County's responsibility to its citizens is to correctly account for public funds, manage county funds wisely, and plan for adequate funding of services desired by the public." The answer is no. I've scoured the internet for weeks and cannot find, for one instance, property taxes themselves declining. This is a one-way train. In the private sector, defiance of your employer is grounds for termination. Your vote regarding any and all tax increases will define the outcome of all of our future. Will you force the citizens of this county to implement Florida State Statute 100.361?"
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Next, I have Tracy York. Then I have Carl York, and then Mr. Richard Russell.
My name is Tracy York. I've been here since 2014, and I'm agreeing, agreeing to this, postpone the increase. Why can we not keep at the same level and cut out other things? Why can you all use what already have, like the firehouse buildings that are abandoned? Why can't we just fix those? I implore you five commissioners to act like your money, this is your money, and spend it wisely. It is a derelict of your duties of protecting the citizens from the price tax hike. You are actually raising taxes on people in Charlotte homes that has never been repaired yet. How dare you? Why don't you fix the ones that we have? The fire stations that are there, still standing, that just needs maybe a roof, gutted, and refixed? That's less money to the people. It's ironic that most of you are builders and are affiliated with builders in the industry, and you can't just think of a way to repair and fix what we already have, instead of throwing good money after bad? My parents taught me that when I was young. It is wasteful spending, and the people here sees this. So, stop wasting the people's money carelessly, instead of thinking ways of cutting back. So, as I see customers on a daily basis, they know that your jobs as commissioners are for reelection. And the people's duty, citizens, is not to reelect you if you're not going to do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Carl York. Mr. York, please.
My name is Carl York. There's not a whole lot of things to say here, other than the fact that you guys are raising taxes for stuff that we could actually, like she said, that could actually be done in better ways. I'm getting, we, we started an FRA here, and we're gaining people steadily. And I keep hearing about recalls consistently. Everybody's like, why is everybody just sitting around? Why don't we recall these people? I'm like, because it takes everybody coming together to do it. But you guys keep disappointing everybody, and you keep getting in everybody's pockets. Pretty soon, it's probably going to happen somewhere along the way. We, we're just, we're just trying to make it. We've got exorbitant rates of salaries for folks that's in this, that's in this county. I mean, exorbitant. I mean, we've got people in, setting in, in positions in this county that make more than the president. But yet, we sat here trying to fleece down the, the people of this county for more money. And it just keeps going, but we don't, we, we give away infrastructure. We take the Sunseeker and we say, well, you know, hey, you guys all didn't think far enough ahead, we'll go ahead and give up the frontage to the, to the place right beside a bridge that might need expanded sometime 50 years from now. Move the bridge or move the building, which one do we do? Because we can't keep doing it like that. We've got roads that are deteriorating all over this county, but no money coming in for the infrastructure. Everything's getting built around it, instead of after it. So, it's kind of the cart before the horse scenario here. And it's not working. And it's going to keep getting worse, and people's going to keep getting more angry, and you're going to have more people flooding out the doors of the, of the Murdoch Center over there. And it's just going to, it's just not going to improve. You've got, you're just going to keep imposing things on, on, on us, and it's just going to eventually break, because things only stretch so far before they break. And it's the same thing with, you know, you've got you guys's charter review. You guys live by your charter review. That is essentially our county constitution, according to my, to a document request. It's what you guys use, the charter review board, but you appoint those folks to be our voice. How does that work? So, essentially, this is run by the state, and you guys work with the state and not for the county, for the people of this county. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Richard Russell. Then I have Mike Moses. And after Mr. Moses, I have Mr. Chad McCollum.
I'm not going to whip you with a cat of nine tails, but I'm, I'm happy to see seven smiling faces up there, instead of five with two backs of heads. So, I hope it's going to be a sign of the future. I am a member of a waterway advisory, and one of the things, I've been on there for a long time, one of the things that surprised me is, on the sheet, it shows that we have a maximum rate of $679. I wondered how that came about. Now, we're not paying that, nowhere near that, but it does kind of wake you up when you look at it and say, good golly, it can go to 679. I'm, I'm wondering, who and how is that maximum rate established? I mean, I've been there almost 10 years, and I haven't had, had a vote or suggestion or recommendation or anything, so I just wondered where it came about. So, if somebody could answer that for me. The MSBU that we have is Buena Vista. It's a confluence of the Sunrise Waterway, El Cam, and the other canals to the east, towards the 41 Bridge. And to the west, we have East Spring Lake and West Spring Lake, which comes together, and it makes a 90-degree turn as it hits Sunrise Waterway at the Beach Complex. And that's been a real problem, because we got constantly having sand burns build up there, and it's just an ongoing thing. But Spring Lake does not have an MSBU. There's no contribution from them. I mean, there's hundreds of houses up their waterways, and I'm wondering why that, you know, we're not getting some compensation or some help from them, frankly? Because the cost of everything's going up. We've already had prices go up on our dredging, probably close to 100% over what we thought it was going to be. And that's a massive increase, and I think it's unfair. Plus, we've got an MSBU to north of us that pays a fraction of what we do, but yet, they use our waterways. So, there needs to be some fairness. I believe in fairness about everything. So, I would appreciate some help with, with regard to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moses?
When, when I heard about the tax increase for the fire service, I was thinking, what were they thinking? Are they tone deaf? 25%? It's ridiculous. It's disgusting. They may, they may use car salesmen it and say, well, you know, it's a lot of people don't like it, so we'll, we'll only do 20%, but it's too much. Here's the thing. Robert Kennedy was being interviewed on, on Newsmax, and he said that currently, the, there is a $5,000 difference below what the cost of living is. $5,000, okay? And that's, that's nationally. And I would say that that's locally, too. And I would say that that's locally, too. You know, the cost of living is going up. It's skyrocketing. Insurance, house insurance has doubled in a lot of places, if it's there at all. Gas is a third up. Groceries often are at least 50% up for major items. People are struggling. People are tightening their belt. But the county doesn't have to do that. They have to tighten the noose, and that's what you're doing. For the MSBU, there is impact fees that are supposed to cover things like fire, schools, and other kinds of stuff. Commissioner Deutsch was at a meeting where your budget director talked about that the only impact fee that you guys had, and you've changed that, but was for transportation, okay? The impact fees should be covering those kinds of new fire stations that you say that you need, not MSBU's, not 1% supplementals. The citizens are rightfully screaming about this. If you go to next door and look at the conversations that have been had, where people are saying that "I can't afford stuff anymore," you would be shocked. You should be doing that. You should be sensitive to that. It is just, it's just beyond frustrating to see what's going on. And I know the reality of what the politics are here, because if you want to raise money, which is what governments do, what governments always do, because you want to gentrify Charlotte County, then you can't do it by the real estate tax. You've got to do it by fees, permits, MSBU's, and that's what you're doing. And how do you do that for the MSBU's? Well, you go and get a consulting firm, and the consulting firm gives you reams of data, 300 pages of data, and you say, "Wow, so much data."
Thank you, sir.
And my time is up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCollum. Then I have Renee Petro and Bill Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Chad McCollum. I'm the District Vice President for Charlotte County Fire and EMS Union. I represent over 260 firefighters and paramedics that serve our community. I'm speaking in support of the proposed increase to the fire assessment MSBU. To the public here tonight, please know, the men and women of Charlotte County Fire and EMS are here to serve you. When you call 911, we respond. Whether it's for a loved one having a heart attack, or your smoke detector needs its batteries changed, it's your loved one having a stroke, or your cat stuck under your shed, we're here for you. Our desire to serve, our dedication to our service and craft are represented every time you call. We were there for you during COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. We were there for you during and after Hurricane Ian. I assure you, we will continue to be there for you no matter what comes next. But folks, we are stretched thin. The men and women of Charlotte County Fire and EMS are sacrificing their most precious resource, it's their time. Extra shifts, increased call volumes, increased emotional and physical stress, these things are adding up. Increased response times have lasting consequences. When you're having a stroke, every minute that stroke is untreated, your loved one is losing something, possibly the ability to talk or walk, or maybe the loss of a cherished memory. The current assessment funding will simply not support the growth that our community's currently seeing. This administration and Fire Chief Ferr have a plan, a plan supported by a third-party professional study, objective data to help guide their decisions. A plan to reduce those response times, but the plan requires additional funding. That requires sacrifice from everyone in the community. This new funding will help pay for fire stations, fire engines, and ambulances, but most importantly, men and women to properly staff those resources. On behalf of the 270-plus firefighters and paramedics that I represent, the dedicated professional women of Charlotte County Fire and EMS, thank you for providing this community with the best fire and EMS service. We will continue to serve, but we will need the tools and people to do that, and this assessment increase will help provide those resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Renee Petro and Bill Ferris, and also Dave Kesselring.
Hello, my name is Renee Petro. I've been a business owner and a resident of Charlotte County for over 30 years. My business is in Port Charlotte, and I live in the very, very back of Deep Creek. I did not have time to read 300 pages, or 374 pages, or study percentages, or any of that baloney, but, or important stuff, sorry, not baloney. But I'm coming to you from an emotional letdown. My house caught on fire. We were not home. We never think about the fire department or the ambulance as it's passing by us, except to stop traffic and, er, late for work. But when your house is on fire, the first thing you think of, our son came home from middle school, went to go in the house and found the house on fire. He, from the neighbor's house, called 911. By the time I got to the very back of Deep Creek from Port Charlotte with my house on fire, I had the fire department there, the paramedics there checking out my son, they called, my dogs had been killed, both of them, and the fire department had called somebody to help me with my dogs. They were kind, they were compassionate, and since then, we have become a big supporter of the fire department and EMS. Until you need them, I don't care how much my taxes go up. Everything goes up. I'm a business owner. My electric goes up, my rent goes up. You have to support your community if things go up. We have so many people, just in the back, very back of Deep Creek, there's 100 new cars where I live. So if we can't increase fire and EMS, who's going to come when your house is on fire? And I know this is emotional. It's emotional for me when you see your dog's dead, lying there, or your children's life in danger. Until you have a fire, you don't know how important fire and EMS is. So thank you. And I know all of you are struggling. I know money's tight. I see it. I'm in business, and I have to pay my bills, too, but I think this is one thing we can't sacrifice. These are one, it's one thing, maybe don't dredge the lake. Pay for the firefighters to have better equipment. We need to take care of our firefighters and EMS for ourselves, for our house being on fire, for your mom having a stroke, your dad having a heart attack. These are not things that are negotiable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Ferris, then Mr. Kesselring, and then Joyce Pierce, I think it says?
Bill Ferris, Charlotte County taxpayer and resident for over 38 years. Evening, Commissioners and staff. I see you took my advice and actually had a public hearing where all the public could see and hear you. I can't believe with the upcoming election year, you're actually considering raising our taxes. I have friends and neighbors still trying to settle with insurance companies a year after Hurricane Ian. Same group of friends and neighbors worried about the cost of insurance this coming year because our Florida governor and its legislature thinks it's more important to run for president and go after Disney than it is to address the issues of insurance, as we are the highest in the country. The MSBU system is outdated and broken. I've been told that we have an MSBU system, as there are only a few in the state, Commissioner Doherty brought this to my attention, that we don't have the density. You're never going to have the density if you continue to tax the people out of their residences. The same people that work for minimum wage, that work supposedly at Sunseeker, that cut your grass, that service you at the restaurants, can't afford to live in this county because the houses they are renting cannot be afforded for them because the taxes are so high on the owners in order to maintain them. It's time for this board to start living with the county residents' means and not yours. I just can't believe that, after all these years, that we don't have a way, after some of the numbers I've heard from some of the people speaking here, that we didn't look into this to find out what was going on. Why is it necessary for us to continue to take the fall? The same people, I'm now retired, at home taking care of my 88-year-old dad and 87-year-old mom. I'm on a fixed income now, and I'm going to worry about my insurance next year. I had State Farm. I paid for it in June. I'm covered till June. What's going to happen to me next year? A 25% raise on me is a 25% money out of my pocket to be able to take care of my parents. You guys have got to get your financial house in order. As I've said in this room before, you have two jobs: maintain infrastructure and keep the taxpayer happy. And judging by the people in this room, the taxpayers aren't happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kesselring is up next, ma'am. Dave, do you mind? Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Ms. Pierce, you're up there. Go ahead, go ahead. He won't lose his turn, but thank you, sir, for doing that.
My name is Joyce Pierce. I feel compelled to speak out against these MSBU's. They are totally out of control. These MSBU's give our government terrible power to force property owners to pay for whatever they choose. The MSBU rates go up and up, and we can do nothing about it. Why do public roads and services have MSBU's? Only gated communities with private roads should have MSBU regulation. Funds for roads should be taken out of the county from the general revenue. Ask Lee County. They don't have MSBU's. How can they make it and not have MSBU's? They were appalled when we said something to people from Lee County, that we pay MSBU's on our regular roads that we lived and have lived in there for years and years. We weren't, we didn't have an MSBU. We shouldn't have an MSBU. They're county roads, they're taken care of by the county, and they should not have MSBU's. Anyway, I wonder who makes these crazy laws? These people are given unlimited power to dramatically control our lives. What is happening? When will our commissioners listen to the people and do what we want? The people that vote them into office? With all of these countless speeches and meetings I've gone to for 30 years, I have come to think I beat my head against the wall because it's always, "No, no, no, whatever we say, the county votes yes for it, yes for it, yes for it. Doesn't matter what we say, doesn't matter what the people want. You vote yes, it's in." Well, if we don't have the money for it, we shouldn't be doing it, not just raising prices and have MSBU's go sky high. And I also was unbelievable to hear about this ridiculous law about you can't cut your trees down if you own a property. You cannot cut the trees down, and they even charge you for each inch of a tree that you do cut down when you do have some kind of a permit. What is happening? Who thought that crazy one up? You know, is this still America? Don't we have our own property and our own rights? Shouldn't our commissioners listen to us? Do what we want? And if there's not enough money in the kitty to do it, just don't raise taxes and give higher MSBU's. Live within your budget like we all have to do. Live within our budget. So I urge your commissioners to listen to our voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kesselring. Then I have Matthew. Matthew, I can't read a, I'm sorry? Thank you, and you can say it when you get to the microphone. Mr. Kesselring, please, go ahead.
Dave Kesselring, for the record, you cut me short, so I can't say much nice about the fire department that I had to say. So we, there's many people here tonight. They're here to demand change in the commissioner's culture of tax and spend. Speaking for a large group of constituents, we're not here for a discount. We want the 25% increase in fire assessment dropped altogether, along with the other increases. Government employees shouldn't be getting paid more than the rest of us. It's not the purpose of American government to make millionaires out of public servants. The main reason why so many state and local governments are on the verge of bankruptcy is the combination of government-run monopolies and government employee unions. My problem is more with the unions than, I love the firefighters, I wouldn't mind being one myself. Unions pay politicians to raise taxes to cover high salaries, while politicians pay back the unions with the raises. The enormous power of government employee unions effectively transfers the power to tax from voters to unions. These unions can easily entice elected officials to raise taxes to meet their demands. It is they, not the voters, who control the rate of taxation. This is taxation without representation. I'll demonstrate what happens if a commissioner supports and panders to a union. At least 113 fire EMS employees gave to Commissioner Deutsch in just four days, 48 giving $2 to $3 to counteract the huge $3,000 of donations by three giant fire packs. This is a direct conflict of interest. Another valuable contribution to politicians is massive get-out-the-vote efforts. For that example, for an example, at my voting location, it was me against three firefighters holding candidate signs for Commissioner Constance and Deutsch. Back in 2014, the Local Firefighters Union celebrated on Facebook the defeat of the Tea Party candidate, the taxed-enough-already candidate. The tactic used to raise these taxes is the typical public safety. The fact that 72% of the budget is going toward salaries, many of them highly exorbitant, especially the upper levels, flies in the face of public safety. There's little money left for safe equipment, and I'm going to talk about the rest probably in the next, but I just want to start. Do I have any time left? Additionally, government bureaucrats and politicians conspire against us with a false competition between counties. Politicians say they have to spend more than other counties with over-the-top salaries or lose employees, while the other county's politicians are saying the same thing. The Florida Association of Counties has 377 county commissioners involved. Commissioner Truex is the president of that organization. Why can't they simply get together and set a maximum pay scale so the taxpayers don't get plundered? I'll finish later.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Matthew, please, go ahead.
I'm Matthew Cankar. I'm from Sullivan on Port Charlotte. I wanted to address three issues. One of them is the attendance tonight. I spoke last at the last meeting, and I remember mentioning that I was concerned because of the people that I think would have overwhelmed this room the last time we were here. I couldn't even get through the hallways. I had to walk outside around the building to go from one side to the other. I think it's important that we contemplate, not only for this kind of a hearing, which I think is great timing-wise and location-wise, anticipate, I gather from the speaking after we all spoke, that a lot of people reached out about their concerns about this issue, but still, we were faced with thousands of people not able to speak, and they were more frustrated, and they give up. So now you see this, a month later, you have a venue, but people are burnt out about the situation. They're disheartened that they don't feel like they are represented at all. They don't think they'll have a voice. So when you talk to them, they don't even want to come. They're like, "Oh, no."
Please, ladies and gentlemen, you've interrupted his time and add five seconds to it.
So anyway, that's one big concern. So I hope that if you see like that cycle of emails coming in, if you can move it to this venue in anticipation of that, I'd really appreciate it. And then having more meetings in a transparent time so the working people can come here. I can't even get here on time when I'm leaving work at a 5 o'clock meeting, maybe 6, 6:30. I think that would be more appropriate, in my opinion. I wish for that. I ask it for the school board. Speaking of that topic, the union thing, I'm a teacher, and I've had the option of unions before, and I see this situation that was spoken about previously. There is a corrupt cycle, much like when builders are donating, and then suddenly there's something passed that might allow for a big complex to be built and other things to be impacted. And now we're having to raise taxes on people for people who are coming into the county, people who are already here are paying to subsidize that and the new businesses they don't even want here. So if you were to have the people who are coming pay the impact and not ask the people to pick up the slack for the people they don't even want here to come, I think that would be highly valuable. Then you have the cycle of the unions. Now, this is just, FDR thought this was communist. You have a union, and they literally get public money directly for their paycheck, and then in turn, they donate for more raises, more money, and it's a circle, a corrupt circle that you would call corporatist if it's the builders, but it's the same cronyism. And at best, it looks really bad. It's got to be fixed. That cannot be happening. Charlotte County could lead the way on this kind of an issue, so I encourage you, eliminate the appearance of corruption, if not outright corruption, even if it's not intended. Like, it just looks really bad when people are giving money, they elect a candidate, they get a raise. We've got to look at how we can cut the spending. This is ridiculous. I can't believe how many people were angry and just gave up and walked out of that place. They could not handle it, and they're not even here, they're still angry. It's really getting bad. And this thing about recall, it's real. People are like, "How do we censure them? How do we recall them? We're done." That's how they talk. That's what I get all the time. So I ask you, please, 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 consider these conflicts and cycles that we've been approaching. Consider the transparency. You've got to reach out to these people, or they're lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Next, we have Dave Kalin, Tammy Kalin, and Pete Neber, or Haber. Dave Kalin's first. Actually, it's Dave. It's you, Tammy, and he's third. You're up now. Yes, Dave Kalin, Tammy Kalin, and then Mr. Haber.
My name's David Kalin, Sr. I live out in the ranchettes, and I see that as taxation without representation. I won't get into what occurred. I think that's been hashed out enough. Has Charlotte County ever hired an accounting or auditing consulting firm to come in and evaluate every department and look for efficiencies and a way to improve processes and cut expenses? We do that a lot in the private sector. In my corporate experience, we would bring in people with the know and improve that process. If you've not done that, I would ask you to look at that. It's a fairly common practice. I am not a licensed financial advisor. This is not financial advice. It's only my opinion and information I've acquired and studied. You understand the financial cataclysmic train that's coming down the pike in months hitting this country financially? Every outfit that I listen to, every advisor I listen to, is warning up through the large banks. If you know what's coming, raising taxes at this time is ill-advised. If you're ill-informed and don't know about it, you need to do some digging and understanding what's going on. U.S. interest yield curve, short and long term, is at its worst position since 1928. We know what happened in 1929. All the red bells and whistles are going off financially for what's happening. Key indicators: For the first time in history, the financial yield curve globally has inverted. Never has happened before. The 10-year bond performance is the worst performance in three consecutive years of losses. The last time it was this bad was 1787, not 1987, 1787. If you look at the BRICS nations competing against the West and the SWIFT system, our allies are jumping ship and going over. They're looking to replace the dollar as the reserve currency because of the way we have manhandled countries as a nation. When we lose that, whether that's the Japanese yuan, or whether that's the International Monetary Fund's IMF, which I think, or pardon me, the International Monetary Fund's SDR, Special Drawing Rights, that's where I think it's going, we're taking a 36% haircut for all our international settlements. It's going in the tank. Delinquencies on credit cards and card payments are exploding. Personal credit on credit cards has hit a new milestone, $1 trillion.
Your time is expiring, but thank you.
I thought I had five minutes, but thank you.
That's three. Dave, I don't have a card on you, so when you're done, if you'll fill out a card for me?
Oh, I did fill out a card.
Well, I didn't have his then. So I marked that one as senior. If I can get one as junior, please.
He's got it.
Oh, you got it? Thank you. All right. Come on up. I wasn't going to keep you.
Gentlemen, this is the proper venue to have had the last meeting. But as the saying goes, you're a day late and a dollar short. The constituents that wanted to address you at the last meeting and to be able to hear the other constituents speak are no longer here. As the previous gentleman spoke, they're left, and they're angry. I want to let our firefighters know that I have the utmost respect for them. At a very young age, my life was saved by our EMS, not this county, but Fairfax County, Virginia. So I owe them my life. With that, we still have checks and balances. We still have to control the spending. The focus of the last fire tax hearing was over the response times. We're in line, for the most part, with our surrounding communities. Again, I did speak at the last hearing about my potential tax increase of upwards of $15,000. After a bit of research, I was able to find out that, yes, you guys sent me erroneous information. This came from your taxing authority. I've been able to work through it with the property appraiser's office to find out, yes, I'm still going to be hit substantially, but not as high. However, not before one of you called me and blasted me for my comments, then doubled down on a local radio show. In the words of Ronald Reagan, he put it best, "The nine words should scare you the most. I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." In my case, Mr. Reagan was absolutely right. I don't know what else I can say at this point to this board, because you all walk in and you have your preconceived decision to what you're going to make. We're struggling. We're all struggling. I know most of your net worths. You're not even in the same class as 90% of your constituents. We feel it. It hurts. And while it may not be totally your fault, you look what our administration is doing to our nation, I lay the 90% blame there, but you all can help. Reduce this. Quit creating the crisis and then saying, "We're reducing from the 25% to be the hero." Because at the end of the day, you're not the hero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tammy?
Tammy Kalin, I keep hearing people say it's only $51 a tax increase. I also remember them telling us it's only a mask, it's only two weeks to flatten the curve, and so on. But it's not just about $51. It's the increased prices of everything, from gas, groceries, utilities, insurances, et cetera. The only thing that hasn't risen for most of us is our paychecks. Many are struggling to make ends meet in this economy, and yet the county and the board haven't even looked at the budget to analyze where cuts can be made. It is inequitable and inexcusable to raise taxes without any regard to the impact on the people. This board chose to proceed with the last hearing, knowing they were violating the rights of the people because there wasn't enough space. And when the people stood before you, pleading, begging, some nearly in tears, expressing the hardships of the economy, and many still recovering from the hurricane and battling with the insurance company, this board, without the liberation, reflection, or evaluation, quickly passed the tax increase. In a recent conversation, I was asked which commissioner represents me. I responded, "No one represents me on this board." They have abandoned the Charlotte ranchettes, and in fact, none of them represent you or anyone in this county. This board has been selected to rule over us. We have greed, corruption, fraudulent elections, and those in power who have placed self-interests of getting rich from backdoor deals and sweetheart contracts. It's no different than the swamp in D.C. And now a member of this board, Mr. Teseo, has been harassing and attempting to intimidate my husband. He called after my husband was in the ER. Any respectful person would have postponed that conversation until my husband was feeling better. But Mr. Teseo continued, running and demanding lists of people's names who conducted business with us. Emails were received and were not responded to. At an REC meeting, Mr. Teseo became very hostile and aggressive in an argument, and there were plenty of witnesses. But when Mr. Teseo, on a local broadcast radio, called out a private citizen on a public forum, that is a vicious attack and is reprehensible conduct and behavior of a political person using their power against a private citizen. It is despicable. You should be focusing on the people who are still homeless after almost a year, while there are three lots of FEMA trailers and campers waiting for them. It is time for the people to stop living in fear. Your fear is a prison used to control and enslave you. We must protect and defend our children and the future. Find your strength. Find your courage. Stand up. Fight for your freedom. The time is now or never. God bless America and all the patriots.
Okay. Good evening. Paul Haber. This is not an anti-firefighter message at all. This is an anti-tax message. When I grew up, when I was a little boy in my neighborhood, we had the fire department, and they, every year, they would have a fair. Kids would come, they would play, we'd hang around, and we'd jump all over the fire trucks. We'd run through the fire station, and it went on and on every year after year. We don't have any of that going on over here that I see. Anyways, but it's not an anti, this is not an anti-firefighter message. It's an anti-tax message. There could be other ways to get funds, many other ways, and to have a large increase like this, I think, is ridiculous, in my opinion. We have other ways to do it. We have a lot of smart people in Charlotte County. I don't know if the commissioners reach out to the people in Charlotte County, literally reach out and say, "Hey, you guys are pretty smart. Do you have any other ideas?" And really raising taxes for the people, on the people here, this much, this much. I mean, of course, we have to pay taxes. We want, we want good fire stations and fire engines and proper equipment for our fire department. We want that. There's no question about that at all. You know, and, you know, so let's not pull on heartstrings about whether or not we're, you know, we know, we're all adults here. Most of us, I think, we're all adults. We know we need fire departments. You know, let's look at the Lahaina issue, right? Lahaina issue in Hawaii. We have to look at that, because it doesn't matter how many fire stations you have, it doesn't matter how many firemen you have. If the water's turned off, the fire continues to burn. I'm going to second what David Kalin said on most of his stuff, except for the personal I didn't prepare a large speech. I work, my wife works, we'd get off of work, and we're working, we're in our 60s, going in our 60s, and we're still working. And we've got a mortgage and stuff, and taxes do affect us. I'm on a corner lot. I think, is it correct that I'm going to get charged twice because I'm on a corner lot? Not sure about that yet. Still trying to figure out if that's, and I want to know why, if that's the case. I'm thinking if you're given this high of a tax increase, I'm thinking, where did you fail? You know, where is it that you feel that you need to make up this money? You know, because I'm pretty sure the money's in our coffers for this, for these projects. We needed to do that. There's fire stations that you want to tear down and acquisition land and get new fire stations. When we have fire stations, that can be rebuilt and repaired and, you know, my grandfather was a fireman in Chicago, 1910. You know, those fire stations lasted a long time before they took them down.
Okay, sir, thank you, your time.
Time's up? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Tony, do we have any more cards? Okay, we have no more cards, so we're going to move forward, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Berger for the presentation.
Good evening, commissioners.
Turn it up. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Get it really close. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, Gordon Berger, Director of Budget Administrative Services. A little different tonight than we're used to for our budget hearings. Because of the input from citizens around the MSBUs, we set this up first so that we could, you could set the rates prior to going into the budget hearing. So this first section is on the MSBUs. You will tonight set the rates for the MSBUs. This is the final public hearing for that. And then we'll go into the budget hearing, which is the first public hearing for the budget, and then we'll have the second one on the 19th.
Correct.
Yes, the 19th. So the agenda for this, two MSBUs we want to highlight tonight, one, the fire, and the other, West County, or, yes, excuse me, West Charlotte, Swarwater. Those were the two that were highlighted that you asked us to bring back to you. And so we wanted to give some background information on this. We've been re-airing the public meeting from March, when we went through the fire study, we went through the long-range fire trends. And so tonight, we wanted to recap that very succinctly. So I'm going to ask Chief Fair to come. He's going to go through the operational piece of it, and then I'm going to come back up and go through the financial piece.
Good evening, commissioners. Jason Fair, Director of Public Safety, for the record. So as we go through the fire EMS budget, or the fire EMS operational plan, this is what we have put together for the five-year strategic plan. This is what was presented to you back in March, so we'll walk through it again in a little bit more detail. So to start off, Charlotte County Fire EMS, it's an all-hazards approach to emergency response, so that is not just fire, but it's also EMS, it's hazard materials, it's special operations, such as technical rescue, confined space, also has to do with marine operations and support of the airport operation as well. So within those divisions, we have operations, men and women in the field doing the job. We have a training division, fire prevention, support services, and emergency vehicle maintenance. That's what is covered through this MSBU. 277 certified personnel with 22 civilian support members, 17 firehouses, and we're just at about 38,000 calls per year, or last year, excuse me. So when we look at our overall service demand, we're looking at an 18% increase just in the last five years, with 21% specifically on that EMS side. So again, looking at that 28,000, when you look at those numbers, you can see the increases most specifically in that '20, '21, and then '22. So as we had talked to back in March, we'll present it again here, there's really three things that are playing into putting this operational plan together and that strategic plan together. One of those has to do with what we call our peak call responses. So what this is, is the probability of having a second call within the same zone when there's a call already going. And so when you look at that, for example, a second call received in Station 1, 49% of the time, almost half the time, every other call that the crew runs, there's a second call coming in right behind it. So that just goes to show the volume in that area, and we call our call concurrency or that peak response time. You'll see Station 13, Station 2 are right there closely, closely behind it. Then we have what we refer to as our temporal distribution. So this is really looking at the peak time, where we looked at the peak areas, having that second call. Now we're talking about the time. So that 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is kind of the peak call times, and we have, we look at that in our strategic plan very specifically, as we'll explain later, but 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So during those times, we're running approximately about six calls an hour. And then the third thing is what we refer to as our unit-hour utilization. So this is speaking specifically to the time that those crews are on emergency calls. So looking at Station 1, for example, or Rescue 1, we're looking at 27% of the time is, that shift period is what they're spending on an actual call. Now, the balance of that time is spent on training, doing fire surveys, inspections, pre-planning, and a number of other options as far as like community engagement. So that 27%, 26%, 26%, and another one right there, 24%. The reason those numbers are important is because the standard, we look at the best practices, look at 30% as being that time at which you'd have to add an additional unit to maintain your availability for the next call. And then the recommendation is 25% is the point at which you start to plan for that additional unit. So we already have three that were already above that 25% when this study was done. And now you look at 24% for Rescue 2, looking at those numbers already, that one now is also above that 25%. So when we look at our overall response and how we look at our operation, we look at that first, we have our overall objectives, look at three things specifically, and that is, one, we want to get the closest unit we can on scene as quickly as possible. The second thing is we want to get advanced life support on that scene as quickly as possible. And the third one is we want to get transport on that scene as quickly as possible. If we can achieve all of those in a single unit, that's great. So by the engine arriving first, having advanced life support capability, which is the paramount. is the paramedics, the ability to distribute, the ability to carry the medications, innovation, that advanced level care, and then having the ambulance on scene as quickly as possible to provide that transport. Ambulances, they, they are, that transport, therefore, they are out of service longer in order to engage in that transport. Where that fire engine can go available as soon as they clear that scene, they're ready for that next call, where the ambulance is the one transporting. So it's about maintaining that service while that unit is transporting out of service, getting that individual to the hospital, getting that pass on, and then getting back available, back in district. Advanced life support, as we spoke to, and the objective is important. And right now, we're running with eleven of our fourteen fire engines, basically, are advanced life support level now. So that means they have EMTs and paramedics. And this goes back to that all-hazard response. So the capability is not just fire, it's an all-hazard response. So eleven of the fourteen are currently advanced life support. This plan brings the balance of them up to advanced life support. So that's having a paramedic, having an EMT, and having the equipment to provide that service. We're also looking at ten- and twelve-hour rescues. When I talked about that temporal distribution, that busy time of the day, you're looking at that eight AM to eight PM, what we're looking at is bringing on rescues for that peak time of the day. Not bringing on a twenty-four-hour rescue, but bringing on a twelve-hour rescue that just addresses that period of time when it's showing that those volumes are there. It also talks about adding an officer to those engines. Again, this is just for that effective response force, getting the number of personnel that we need on the scene and doing it in fewer units rather than more units, keeping them available, meeting those NFA standards, and bringing that staffing up to three. If you look at the map on your left there, that is basically showing you what our response time is at that six minutes. That's what our coverage is from our current stations. What we're doing is the three stations that we talk about in this proposal is the picture on the right. And it shows you how it changes those response times. And what's highlighted, which is hard to see here, but you'll see the lighter color green that shows you where those three stations are anticipated, where they're being planned. This is a heat map showing those response areas, so that a high volume will call. And in there, you'll see those yellow stars that represents those same locations that we showed you on the other map. And again, those are those three station locations that we referred to. So starting with that first station, that's Station Seventeen. So Station Seventeen is already a penny sales tax project, and that's how we look to fund the additional stations as well, not coming out of the MSBU, but rather being that penny sales tax project, looking at other funding options. This one's already in that queue. So what we'd be looking at is the equipment. So we're looking at an engine, a rescue, and the personnel to staff that station. So when we look at that, it's an engine, a rescue, a ladder. We like to plan further down the road. But then we're looking at three lieutenants, six firefighter EMTs, and six fire medics to support both of those units. The next one is Station Eighteen. So this is then the Edgewater area, coverage area. Again, it's a station which we look to cover from a different funding source, sticking to a brand-new engine, a rescue, and then the same balance of personnel. And then we have Nineteen, which will be the same thing. This will be in that South Gulf Cove area, the same balance, new engine, new rescue, and then the personnel. Again, station being funded through a different source. Building the rest of that plan out is Babcock, so that's part of, that's what is already in plan now. And we have a station that's being constructed there now that already we have the staffing for it because that's associated with the current staff that's out there now. It's just the new station. Of course, that's in a partnership with Babcock itself. Then we have station, additional station in 2028, and one in 2031. Again, same balance, an engine, a rescue, and then the personnel to support that. When I talked about the three twelve-hour units, the ones that help us meet that peak time, this is the distribution for them. So we're looking at three units that'd be staffed with. So we'd start with two new rescues, and then we'd bring on the four paramedics and four EMTs. And a couple of years later, bring on the next rescue, and we'd bring on the three paramedics and three EMTs to staff those as well. Showing you the rest of that strategic plan from the perspective of what it would take personnel-wise from a support perspective. You'll see in 2024, what we're looking at is a fire inspector, administrative assistant, projects coordinator, training officer, division chief, lieutenants. You'll see there, fire medics and firefighter EMTs. So this is to help support the growth and the responses that are there already. You'll see the additional lieutenants, paramedics, and EMTs. What that's looking at is to help us from the staffing perspective. You heard some of the comments earlier in regard to mandatories. They're working mandatories days that they weren't planning to. This is helping us to cover that and bring down what those total work hours are that they're working now. That concludes my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Commissioners, looking at the financial side of this. You remember back in March, first want to talk about where the funding comes from. There's been several references to that tonight. We're talking about just the fire in this Fire MSBU. So fire services are covered from the MSBU. EMS services are covered from the general fund. And then all of the capital expansion in terms of fire stations, new apparatuses, not replacements, but new apparatuses due to expansion, those all come either from sales tax or impact fees. When we, when we looked at this, we wanted to compare apples to apples because we weren't sure how we fit in with other places. And so we looked at some different locations. Martin County, St. Lucie County, because they're very similar to us in the way that they were built and designed. Sarasota County, our neighbor. We went to look at Lee County. However, Lee County has sixteen independent fire districts. So what we did is we took two of those that, you know, in geographic terms and layout were similar to us. Which you'll notice there is the population, the service area population. And by service area, I mean, you know, a county only covers that area which isn't have, covered by an incorporated area. We, of course, only have Ponagorda. So ninety percent of the county is the responsibility of the county. You look at the number of households, and, and then the total square miles, land miles, water miles. This was made reference to earlier, but if you look at that density, the other organizations, about two to three to even four times as much density as what we have here in Charlotte County. And so what we wanted to do is try to do a comparison. Now, the truth is, everyone approaches this differently in terms of how they fund it. So to try to stack it up and compare, we looked at averages across counties and across home prices. So here in Charlotte County, for occupied, at that point in time, current rate is $203.77 per occupied lot. Martin County, they do it through an MSTU. The difference there is, rather than charging a flat amount per parcel, they charge an ad valorem base tax that is based on the property value. So if you look at what the average, average person in Martin County is paying, it's about $1,000 annually for fire service. St. Lucie County, about $810, the average home. Sarasota County, lower. Sarasota has a great deal of density, great deal of, and municipalities, so much lower. And theirs is also very, very different in that they, they charge base, they have like a split rate, and it's based on a 2,000-square-foot home and then on up. So larger homes pay more than smaller homes, but it's a very different structure than what we have here. Lehigh Acres, they, again, they are an MSBU, and it's about $324 per, per unit. Lehigh, I'm sorry. And then North Fort Myers, MSTU, and about $1,000. So we're very much on the low end of that in terms of what our fire rates are compared to comparable counties. If you look at that based on cost per capita and cost per household, again, we're the first section there, so lower than all the other counties except for Sarasota. And again, as referenced earlier, the density that takes place there. So much, much lower in terms of our cost per household and cost per capita. So we tried to look at this from different perspectives in terms of comparable rates, but also cost per household, cost for, for population. Tried to be very thorough in the way we looked at it. Now, the question often comes up, you know, why we use MSBU's? Why not MSTUs? Well, again, comes back to the density. So we wanted to be able to demonstrate, you know, what the options would be here. If we moved to an MSTU and we base this on ad valorem as opposed to on a per parcel basis, and, and this is the equivalent millage rate that we would need to charge in order to collect the dollars that we're collecting to pay for fire services, would be about 1.4 mils. If you look at the range of, of options, or the ranges of costs that that would be, essentially, any homeowner whose home was valued at more than $150,000 would be paying more than they're currently paying. So vacant lots, obviously, would be paying less than what they're currently paying. But for homeownership, anything above $150,000 would be paying more under an MSTU than what they're currently paying under an MSBU. We, of course, took that, that workshop and looked at long-range projections, ten years out. I've added a few slides here just to kind of look at this. What this slide is looking at is the last fifteen years. The, the blue bars are the fund balance in, in the fire fund. And you can see that at one time, that fund balance was, was up as high as $17 million. The numbers above it are the rates that are being charged. So you can see during the recession, the rates were actually reduced twice. So in 2009, they were at $169. 2010, they were lowered to $150. Because of the number of cuts that were made to the fire agency during that, during the early part of the recession, that fund balance began to grow. And again, in 2012, the rates were reduced again to $135. That, of course, we've again seen very quickly that fund balance erode down. By the time we got to, we kept those rates flat for the next four years. When we got to 2016, clearly was not sustainable, it was time to do something. At that point in time is when we instituted a four percent annual increase. However, that was not sustainable either, and we knew that as we got down to the farther end of that, and, and that's flattened out. I want to point out, in 2022, that increase in the fund balance is due to the $5 million that we got in CARES funding. If it had not been for that $5 million in CARES funding, we would have had to do this a year or two earlier. That, that fund balance would be wiped out. So that $5 million in CARES funding actually allowed us to postpone the increase, the increases for a year. This is just looking at those rates that was above the bar there. This is just a graphic view of it. The blue are the actual rates that, that are being, that have been charged for fire assessments on an annual basis. The orange bar is adjusted for inflation. So if you look at that adjusted for inflation, those rates have been basically flat over that fifteen-year period of time. This tells kind of the story, you know, I hear a lot of people talk about the MSBU system. And this kind of tells a little bit of the story of why the, these increases are needed. If you, if you look at occupied lots, our current rate on, on the occupied lot is, as I said, two, two, two oh seven, or two oh three. We charge a lower rate for the vacant lots. If you look back at 2009, we had 68,000 occupied lots. We had 182,000 vacant lots. And again, gets back to that density issue. When you have three times as many vacant lots as you do occupied lots, that's just not efficient. And then about 20 million square feet of commercial space. If you look at that in today's units, we now have 83,000 occupied, but only 119 vacant lots, and about 23 and a half million commercial square footage. Now, the thing I want you to notice here is, if you look at the unit change, you would expect it to be more, one to one, if an occupied lot, if, if we increase by an occupied lot, seems like one vacant lot would come off. However, there's, it's much more complicated than that. Some of these vacant lots were converted to occupied lots. Some of them came off as a result of the ag exemptions. Some of them came off as a result of conservation easements. Lots of different factors can have. But the, the point of this is, if you look at the fiscal impact of that, if I was charging the same rate today that we were charging back in 2009, we've gained $2.6 million on occupied lots coming on. We've gained about $600,000 in commercial expansion, but we've lost four and a half million dollars in terms of vacant lots that have gone off. So we're really in a net loss position from 2009. So I just wanted to make sure that, that that was, that was clear also.
Yes, sir. Hold on just a second, Gordon.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to have to take a moment here and ask you to further explain that. I mean, I heard you the first time, but I'm still, still not really fully understanding. So if you're telling me that 15,000 of the vacant lots turned into occupied lots, I got it. That's 15,000 on the first line up. How did, what happened to the other 40,000 or? You know, what is that, do the math?
Yeah.
Forty-eight thousand lots we lost?
Yeah.
How is that not being recovered either in vacant, in occupied or commercial? It can't just disappear.
And, well, some of it is, again, occupied, vacant to occupied. But we've also had ag exemptions, and a lot of those vacant lots came off as a result of being exempted because they're now classified as agricultural property. Commercial, I mean, conservation easements.
Anyway, can you give me, I'm going to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I really need examples of somebody just took their one lot and said, I'm now going to be a farm. I mean, how does that?
No, no, no.
Yeah, so let's go, let's dive deeper into the, you know, I want to hear examples of how we went from vacant to ag and how we went from, you know, vacant to conservation and the, and the, you know, some actual large acreage. I'm, I'm sure some of it maybe had to do with scrub jay habitat and stuff like that. So I need to understand that, which means we're almost kind of doing, you know, we need some sort of payment in lieu of taxes kind of, kind of situation. So how's that not been worked into this formula? And, and I hate to throw the HCP under the bus, but was this ever contemplated with the HCP? You know, if we're taking that land off the tax rolls because we have to do it so that folks can develop their scrub jay lots at a lot lower expense, somebody else is paying the tab evidently, right?
Yes. And, and I can't account for all 40,000 lots, Commissioner, over 15 years.
Right.
I'm just giving you the broad categories of how these things happen. My main point was here was that all of the lot transitions have not led to an increase in revenue. That revenue has had to come from increases.
Well, this is an important slide. I appreciate you putting, putting this in the presentation because I, you know, I think this speaks to a lot of, you know, that's a huge delta.
Yes.
Big difference in, in revenue. And that, that has a lot to do with why we're in the position we're in, along with, you know, and that's why those rate curves went so far down. You know, you can't just explain it by saying, well, so we went with a four percent per year, yet it went down. How's that even possible? That's how. Okay, thank you.
So going back to what Chief Fair was presenting in terms of positions coming on, these are the original assumptions that we used in the March workshop for doing our 10-year projections on, on which the rate re-increases were recommended. So you, you can see for '24, and the biggest thing about this, Commissioners, is most of this is upfront, and it's in 2024. And that's why the increases needed to be upfront. So we've got, this is what the original assumptions were, and they're basically just repeats of the slides that Chief Fair had earlier with a little more detail on them. And at that workshop, we brought you four options. The first option was to continue the four percent annually, and of course, we demonstrated that that just was not feasible at all. So we looked at a six percent annually, and that did not work either. And, and again, it comes down to the fact that a lot of this growth, the amount of growth that is built up in this county that we have not expanded for, and now expanding for in these first two years, requires a higher increase in the first year. And so we looked at 25% in '24 and 5% annually thereafter. We looked at 20% in '24, 6% annually. You proposed that we looked at a hybrid, basically for the purpose of setting the first year, and then setting a maximum rate. And, and someone asked earlier how you come to that maximum rate. What we did is we actually just went out at 10 years. We went to fiscal year 31. If we were using that formula, this is what the maximum rate would be. And of course, you would set annual rates each and every year and would take them up at the progress, or at the, at the rate that, that you felt was, was needed, based on what we bring back to you, but we would be setting that maximum rate. We brought back that, that hybrid that you asked for, and that's the rate that was published, and that's the rate that we talked about at the July. and that's the rate that we talked about at the July MSBU public hearing. Now, this is what that, the 10-year projection on that increase looks like. So the blue bar is the revenue coming in from those annual increases. The red bar are the expenditures, and the green bar is basically the reserves of the fund balance. And you could see this was sustainable. We heard you loud and clear that you wanted to spring back options. We looked at a number of options, Commissioner. What we did was primarily, we didn't want to impact operations. So we looked at our assumptions, and some of our assumptions were, we felt were too conservative. So for instance, what we've done here is for the first year, we've assumed that really we're only looking at three months of expenditures because by the time you hire that many people, secure that amount of equipment, get things going, it's going to take nine months to get this rolling and get this on together. So we only programmed in three months for 2024, and then we made a similar assumption in '25. They're now rolling, but the first three months of those positions in '25 would not come on for the first three months. So that allowed us to reduce something in terms of timing. The other thing that we did was we looked back at our reserve policy. And our reserve policy would indicate about $3 million a year as the minimum threshold. So we tried to maintain that. You're going to see in a second here, we don't quite, but we don't drop below it for long. So the scenario that we're bringing back to you, you know, is 15% in '24, and then 12% in '25, and then 6% annually thereafter. And again, the reason for the increases upfront is if we don't get those increases upfront, we're going to erode the fund balance very, very, very quickly. This is what that looks like graphically, and you can see again, the blue line being the revenues, the red lines being the expenditures, and that green bar coming, you know, consistently tailing down, basically kind of living on our reserves for a while, gets well below that $3 million range in 2028, but then quickly comes back up. Now, Commissioner, these are projections, and we all know five years from now, it's not going to look exactly like this. So every year, you're going to look at these, you're going to reevaluate, we're going to bring you updated projections, and you can make those judgment calls. But we want to be fiscally responsible and show you long range. If it stays on this trend, this is what it'll look like. So fall below our reserve levels, you know, but come back up very, very quickly. So comfortable with that, and that's the recommendation that we're bringing at this time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Gentlemen, any questions?
Well, I had a comment first more than a question. Okay. So I just want to take this opportunity, there were some things said during public comment, and I just wanted you guys to know, I've worked with you for a number of years now, and whether I'm on or off this dais, when I'm talking about government things, I'm always acting in the capacity of the proper decorum that we would have in the chamber, even though it's off the dais. And I heard some comments from the public regarding commissioners not being receptive to these issues. The reason I called Mr. Kalin was because I was taking notes during the last hearing on this, and he had some concerns that concerned me. And I took my notes, and I figured, well, I'm going to give Mr. Kalin a call. So I called him up, and I said, "You know, you said your taxes were going to go up $17,000." And I said, "That concerned me." And he also said he lined itemed our budget, and it was bloated. So I asked him if he could name a couple line items, we can sit down, go over it, and talk about it in preparation for the next budget hearing. He said he wasn't feeling well. So I said, "No problem." We stopped the phone call. I followed up with an email. This was characterized as demanding and demeaning, and I just want to read it and let the audience decide. "Mr. Kalin, as we discussed, you were going to send me a fire fee notice on one of your rented properties. I've been unable to find anything that would cause a $17,000 increase to your rent from the proposed fire rate. You are also going to send me a line item review of our budget and indicate where we were bloated. I look forward to reviewing these matters. Regards, Joe Teseo." I did not hear from him for a week. I followed up another time professionally. It has been almost a week, and I have not heard back from you regarding my email below. Our final budget hearings are quickly approaching, so I'll need that information so I can look into the matter. Regards, Joe Teseo." I wasn't demanding anything. That's it in writing. I thought it was very professional. What I heard from people is that what they, that's what they want from their commissioners? responsiveness. Meet the needs of the people. I literally called the constituent about his concerns, followed up multiple times with emails, you just heard them, and it was characterized as demeaning and harassing a constituent. I just wanted the people to know that's what's in writing. You can decide for yourself. I'm not here to defend myself. But I always act in a professional manner on or off the dais. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Gordon? No, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just, you know, curious, if you can go back to slide 29, I think, or I don't know, the one with fiscal, yeah, the one with the Babcock, no, the two, yeah, right there, the 2024, fiscal year 2024. So Babcock Station, 1, 9 positions, 10 hours. So is this box pretty much Babcock? Or are there, or is there more than, is this pretty much what we're going to be outlaying for that location?
No. That top line is just Babcock. Remember, the station that's there will be manned by the current manpower of whatever station's out there. But this is for the ladder truck that has been provided, if you remember, Babcock is providing the ladder truck, but we provide the staffing. So this is essentially nine positions to cover for that ladder truck.
Right. So I want to talk about, you know, the concept of the growth coming in, and just for my own edification as well. So that ladder truck, they're paying for because they are collecting those fire impact fees themselves out there, and that's how we have it set up where they're collecting their fees, but then they are furnishing with those monies everything they have to do. I think just to get off topic a little bit, you know, the library, they have to pay for the show, and then we have to pay to put in the furniture and the books and staff it and all that other stuff, but that's based on recurring general fund amounts. But as far as the impact fee for creating the public space, in the agreement with them long ago, they said, "Okay, we're going to take all the money, we'll provide, and here's the list of infrastructure." And this is one of those items on that long list.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chair? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to confirm as well, and I think you mentioned it, there was a lot of constituent comments regarding the monies being used to build new firehouses. You mentioned that's coming from other sources, other capital. This is primarily for personnel and some apparatus.
That's correct.
Okay.
Replacement of apparatuses, older apparatuses, but if it's new, it's expansion because of population growth, then it's paid for out of impact fees.
Yeah, because there were comments earlier that, you know, we should have other sources for building firehouses, and we do. And we do charge impact fees for that. I think there was a comment, "You should be doing it." We are. There was also a comment about payroll, and I took a deep dive on that. One of the things I discovered is the unscheduled overtime, and that is causing a significant amount of additional funds to be paid, and it would make the salaries look larger than they are, and it's primarily because we don't have the personnel to properly staff and meet a level of standard that, you know, I think our residents would expect. So when you add in the unscheduled overtime, in some cases, that can make up 10, 20, 30% of an annual salary. And that's because we don't have the bodies to do that, and that's what the report shows, is that we are good in some categories, but other areas, we are below a standard. And if you don't have standards, it becomes very difficult to budget. And what we do, and we try to do it well, is tell each department to establish a standard, bring it back to the board, and we can see if we can work within the framework of those standards. And we had a workshop back in March. I mean, a lot of folks thought we just did a document dump a couple weeks before the last budget meeting. That was not the case. Back in March, we spent a few hours at a workshop that was on TV and livestreamed, and were able to critique the various data reports and forecasting. And then we worked our way to the budget hearing. So we just didn't get this information a few weeks ago. We got it five or six months ago. And then we moved here, obviously, to the budget process to incorporate those findings into the budget. We asked the chief to come back with a standard. We were not meeting national standards for certain response times, and, you know, another gentleman said, "We should only be concerned with low taxes and infrastructure." I agree with that statement, but he missed a major component. We're charged, and we take an oath of office to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That part was missed. That's very important, and that's where this comes into play, because every minute does count. You know, when you call, especially in our demographic and our community with our population, if you call, you don't want the ambulance and first responders there yesterday. You want them there within minutes. Unfortunately, in where I live, we've had three or four different occasions over the years to have to call Fire EMS. Unfortunately, two people passed away, and one got to the hospital and was okay. And I got to tell you something, as I sat there on one of the, one of the, my neighbor, who's relative passed away, there was nothing sweeter than to hear the sirens coming. I can't tell you what a relief to know help was on the way, because you're helpless at that point. And I got to tell you, every, not minute, every second, you're on pins and needles waiting for that response time. And when I read a report, and I've gone over it, just go to the, you don't have to read the whole thing, it's very lengthy, go to the bottom half, like page 320 on, it gives you the recommendations and findings. I found that report to be sound, and I found the chief's plan to be practical in implementing those findings. He would not be doing his job if he did not bring us his operational plan. And we go out and we compared our pay raises, I mean, our pay scale to other surrounding communities. We're not the highest, if you look at the study that we did. We're somewhere in the middle. You know, we're not low, we're not high, we're in the middle. So I find that to be a credible study. We do that all the time when we look at different departments on where we should be. But in this instance, I believe we're doing what we're supposed to do as a commission for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And if you read the report, there are areas where we're two times lower than the national standards in turnout time and response time. That's not a good place to be. And we asked budget director to go out. We forecast this, not a year or two years. It's good planning. We went out years to look at this. So the shoe doesn't drop, and some other future taxpayer gets stuck because we didn't look at this today and take action on it. We try to take a methodical, incremental approach to solving a problem that we know we have. Now, believe me, if the report said we're good and we're on par, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I would be arguing we don't need to do anything, but we're growing. We're growing, and this is part of the growing pains. So we have a choice to make. We can look the other way and not do anything today. There's no statutory requirement that we have to do anything. This is a level of standard that we've adopted that we think is best practices. That's what that report is all about, best practices. So we cannot do anything today when we know we have a problem. That's failure to plan. I mean, that's, that is a failure to plan, and if you don't have a plan, it's a plan to fail. And we can't do that. It would be irresponsible for us to look the other way on this and not address anything. But I also understand what we're going through as a community. I've lived here for 40 years. I've been in the same house for 23 years. You know, I understand what's going on with the economy and everything else, but it doesn't mean we still look the other way. We have to find a balance of where we can do something here and put us on a glide path to where we can properly staff. So that's kind of where I'm at, Ms. Chair. I probably went on too long, but I had a lot I wanted to talk about because there was so much misinformation out there. There was even a constituent who said, he looked at the commissioner's tax records and said, "We pay a different tax rate than them." I mean, I've been living in the same house, I have my homestead exemption, and I'm paying the same tax anybody else would in my situation that lived in the same house at the same period of time, had the same homestead exemptions. That one was a doozy, that somehow we're getting a discount on our taxes. That kind of stuff is just misinformation that misleads the public, just like the $17,000 tax increase. And people were also being told that their total tax bill was going up 25%. And now that the trim notices go out, maybe some people aren't here because they were frustrated, but I think people actually got the trim notice and said, "Jeez, this isn't what I was told it was going to be." And they didn't come tonight. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman? Just want to clarify one thing. I'm sorry.
I got Commissioner Deutsch, and then I'll come to you.
That's fine.
There were probably about 15 comments individually that I'd like to respond to. So I'll probably give somebody a phone call, I'll run into them and trying to let them share some things with them, but I don't know if I'll get accused of anything. I'm not going to worry about that. I'm too big and ugly to worry about that. At any rate, about three or four weeks ago, after Church stopped into IHOP with a couple friends, we thought we'd get a brunch, and we're in there, we say, "There's seven or eight people in there," and I said, "About how long are we going to have to wait?" He says, "Probably about 35, 40 minutes." And I look over, and I said, "There's about eight to 10 tables empty in IHOP. This is like 11 o'clock Sunday morning, and I'm ready for a couple of pancakes." They had that special all-you-can-eat thing. So I'm ready to go in there, and they said, "Well, we can't get enough people. We can't get enough people to wait on the tables, and we're down to cook, so we're really sorry you have to wait." I'm not going to give you my philosophical comments on the economy and where we're at and why we're here, and talk about a whole bunch of those things, but we pride ourselves, and part of the reason we're here, every one of us, we pride ourselves on our first responders, on our sheriff's office, on the firefighters, on the EMTs. And when there's an emergency, we can't say you got to wait a half hour because we don't have enough people to fill those tables. And this point goes directly to salary, and this is why I want to touch upon it. Our firefighters, if we have someone that calls in sick, if we have someone that has, we have an accident, if someone is giving birth, if one reason or another, we have a firefighter that can't show up, we don't turn around and say, "Well, you got to wait another half hour because we can't use those tables." Our employees in the firefighter department don't have a choice. They have what's called mandatory overtime. And there was a day 15 years ago where a lot of them liked the extra overtime. Now they want to spend some more time with family. But when we have an emergency, they have to come in. And do they get overtime? They make a little bit more per hour? Absolutely, and the salaries go up. But the important thing is that we have the people that can serve and be there in an emergency. One or two other real quick things I want to touch upon. Every one of us is being hit with inflation. And as a side note, I went up and I hadn't seen my granddaughter in New England since she was an infant. I don't take a lot of time off. I like to hang around and aggravate everybody in the building, so I don't take a lot of vacation time. And I was in, and I'll get political, in a blue state. I don't think the two of us were able to have a lunch for less than $60 because there's a 10% or 11% tax on everything. I was flabbergasted when I had a chance to sit down with my three boys and find out what they're paying in real estate taxes. We don't know or realize how blessed we are to be here. My house, which is around $3,000, it's an old house, 71, the taxes on that in Rhode Island would be $9,000 a year. Yeah, their insurance was less. Sure, no question about that. I just had to send my premium in. But we don't realize how lucky we are. And the county is dealing with inflation the same way every one of us does. It blows my mind to pay 79 cents for a pound of bananas when they were three for a dollar, three pounds for a dollar two years ago. But the county's being hit on everything. Everything we need and everything we do, we're getting zapped with the inflation too. And I want to, as a, in general, some of the comments and the politically things that seem to have a little bit of appeal to them, when you can make a comment about people getting paid off, or doing this, or doing that. This board, we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to govern for Charlotte County. And that responsibility doesn't mean that we worry about what's happened yesterday. We've got to have We've got to have the wisdom and the foresight, and we have to think that we have to plan for tomorrow. Because you don't snap your fingers and things don't happen that fast. I think we've come up with an alternative. I think we absolutely heard what the people had to say. But we do have the responsibility to protect Charlotte County and to protect every one of the citizens that live here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dooley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify one thing. Gordon, if you could go to slide 36, your recommended rate scenario. I just wanted to make the statement and get a clarification from you that, you know, after the July public hearing, we all heard the desire to reduce that initial increase. And I remember throwing out some concepts as to what could be looked at, and I believe I was asking for 10% the first year, maybe go off that way, just doesn't work. The way I understand it, it just will not work. Our reserve levels will get too low, and we're gonna be in trouble. So this, in your professional opinion, is the best scenario that we could look at at this time with the needs that we have at this time.
Yeah, and Commissioner, we tried to even go 10% in the second year. Tried the 10% in the first year. In order to do that, we'd have to be like, you know, every year, yes, this is the best we can do.
I just wanted the public to understand that this resulting recommendation went through, you went through other iterations to determine that this was the recommended scenario. And we were trying to do even a flatter increase. It just won't work, folks. It's unfortunate, it just won't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I think I need to hear from the chief, if you could step back up to the microphone, because I heard Commissioner Seo make a really good point that, you know, if we're leading correctly, if there's good stewardship of the county, if we're planning correctly, these are the steps we need to take to keep our services correct so we don't lose lives. How hard is it to hire new positions in the face of the fact that you've got Sarasota County and Lee County, north and south of us, which are arguably better funded and are willing to pay higher salaries? So that's question number one. And then question number two is, we wait three years, and all of a sudden, we realize, oh my goodness, we are in dire straits. It's 15 minutes for response times. There's huge public outcry. What's wrong with you people? Why are you letting this happen? So we ask you, chief, hurry up, ramp up. What's your timeframe to make up all that ground? Because you've got to order equipment, you've got to get out there and hire, and now you're fighting against higher salaries, you know. It's just, so I need to understand, you know, the answer to both of those questions.
Certainly, and I appreciate the questions. So in regard to hiring personnel, so we're watching this challenge nationwide. We just heard another example in another industry. This is a nationwide problem. And not only that, but in, as far as public safety goes, and we've seen this in the last few years, and a lot of it's attributed to COVID and some of those items, but we're seeing challenges just in public safety. They're not coming into public safety like they were prior to those events, and it's a challenge to get people in the door and then for them to decide that this is a career for them. So we're running into those challenges already. That is a nationwide, national problem, and it's not just in getting them to our department or to our area, but it's also getting them into the field in a general. Even our education facilities, their censuses are running low compared to where they were traditionally. So, yes, that is a consistent problem. We're also looking at onboarding. Once you hire somebody and get them on board, by the time they're trained to the point of being able to release and count as part of your staffing is four to six months. So, and again, that's looking at a firefighter coming in and training them all the way up to a paramedic being released on the field to run an ambulance or an ALS engine. So that's a six-month turnaround time. As far as the equipment goes, again, we're running into the same issues everybody else is in regard to, before we could order an ambulance, we'd order, you know, for example, two in a year, and we'd get them in that same year. Now we're looking at 18 months for an ambulance turnaround time just for a building. And we're also looking at those prices go up significantly. I know in a recent board meeting, we talked about just the price of an engine that had gone up significantly, and that's because that type of engine wasn't being made anymore. This was the next iteration they were going to, and there was no option. We had to move in that direction. Our fire apparatus, and we gave the example of the Babcock ladder truck, it's a 24-month turnaround time. You know, where before, we can see that within a year. So, yes, those things are delayed, and you'll see that's why this is front-loaded the way it is. And the harsh reality right now is that, yes, in many aspects, we are playing catch-up. We are trying to build and come back at these things, looking at our response times. We, in the last five years, we've added one ambulance. But in the last five years, we showed you an 18% increase across the board with almost 20% in just EMS alone.
And to that point, I mean, about, I guess, eight years ago, or maybe longer, 10 years ago, a few chiefs before you came forward and talked to us about condition red, and, you know, said, well, we really could use another ambulance. We hope we can get that, you know, in the next budget. And our question to the chief was, well, do you need it now? And he said, yes, we do. And we turned to the administrator, who was Ray Sandrak at the time, and we said, Ray, how do we get this done? Because if we're having response time issues, it can't follow a budget cycle. We gotta make sure that we keep the people safe. One other point I want to make up, and I hope you back me on this, but 30 years ago, you were, the department was hiring baby boomers, like myself, who work. They pick a career, they stay in that career, they work their way up the ladder, they gain knowledge, and they are part of that unit, and they grow with the Fire EMS family. You're hiring millennials now, and even Gen Z's, or whatever the next one is. Those folks haven't quite decided what they want to do with their lives. In fact, they'll do something for three or four years, and then they're gone. They're painting houses, then they're gone, then they're charter captain. So this is a big problem. And I really don't think folks fully understand, it's within our whole system that, you know, when we see the budget slides next, you know, we have positions in the budget that don't get filled. And it's because we just can't find folks, and we can't afford to pay any more than whatever that salary range is. So, you know, can you speak to that? Are you seeing more turnover at the more junior levels?
Absolutely, we are. And, you know, at a time when you would join the department because it was hometown, it was something what you wanted to be a part of, you grew up exposed to it, generations that would jump on, they wanted to be part of that, it was something greater than themselves, you know. That is not what's bringing the generation to us now. And it's for a number of reasons, whether it's just the passion for the job itself or versus just, hey, I'll take this now, but if something comes up better, I'll go take that. But there's also challenges from the perspective of residential for that, you know, for us to be able to hire people in our area who we know are going to be here, you know, there's not a lot. And so they're coming in from outside of our county, and if a job comes up that's closer to home because they can't afford to move anywhere, you know, then that creates a challenge, and it's one of those things that leads to whether they stay or not.
Chief, thank you, and thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other points on this section? Okay, then moving forward.
Commissioners, I'm gonna turn it over to John Elias to talk about the West County Stormwater MSBU.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, John Elias, Public Works Director. In July, at the public hearing where we were discussing raising the West Charlotte Stormwater MSBU rate from its current rate to $125 per acre, we received a lot of public input at that meeting. Board gave us direction to try to refine that number. We brought that back to you in August, and what I'm presenting is the same thing that we presented in August. So we broke it down here. I should also point out, as my staff will not be happy if I don't, the rate that we're talking about is per acre. We've also, in this, per the feedback that we got at the public hearing, we've also broken out what it is per average 80-foot lot. So if you look at the slide, you'll see the 80-foot lot is out on the end. We broke it down per line item, and essentially what we were able to reduce the rate by refining some numbers, we've also subsequently met with the West County Stormwater Unit. My team indicated that they still kind of wanted to keep some of the testing rates higher, but we've indicated that the board had given us direction to lower them rates. So what we'd done is we'd lowered the One Charlotte One Water funding from $125,097.108, which was the original ask, and we've deferred the canal sediment removal. So what we're proposing is to, the new rate would be 103.10. What we would also recommend is you could make the max rate 125, and we would only do the 103. And then if we bring the canal sediment program back at some point, which would be our intent, we could bump that up, or we could do it however you all direct us to do it. But taking those numbers and laying them out to the 80-acre, 80-foot lot, the total rate would be 31.25 previously, and that lowers it to 25.77 with those reductions that we did.
So, Mr. Elias, did the MSBU board indicate that they would be okay with that option, and then later on, if they decide they need more funding, that they would, is that the reason we would do, go ahead and do the 125?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions?
Chair, one quick question. Somebody had mentioned that they felt they were wondering if they were getting charged differently if they had a corner lot versus any other lot.
So I think in that rate, we wouldn't be talking about stormwater, you would be talking about a street and drainage unit, and our street and drainage methodology is based on front footage. You might be potentially paying more because you have more front footage.
Right. Okay, so it's, for that particular item, for stormwater, but not for fire, you know, it just, it depends on what you're charging for, and because that particular one, any of them that would charge for frontage, you have two frontages because you're a corner lot on the street.
So to clarify, just to not confuse these issues, I have nothing to do with fire. I don't know the methodology. They've explained all that. The stormwater unit that we're talking about is per acre, but the question that did bring up, to your point, Commissioner, was what I suspect is for a street and drainage unit, and they do potentially pay higher because the methodology for street and drainage is front footage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing done, we'll go to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak during this portion of the meeting, come forward. State your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes this time. Just go ahead and come up. I don't, no, no, you can come up, state your name, that's fine, we'll get you.
Five minutes?
You have five minutes for a public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Sweet. Precedent.
Pull that down.
Pull it down.
Precedent. Since we had comments that were not relevant to the Fire, the emergency response charges, and we talked about stormwater, I'm gonna overlap both topics a little more since I didn't have a full five minutes last time, according to precedent. All right. I would like to say this. In the current, current and future unstable economy, long-range projections are not reliable predictors of future performance. I would also like to say selective community comparisons chosen were quite curious because I did extensive research about what the response times are in combination with our EMS and our Fire, and we exceed standards. We exceed the times per mile, per individual, county per county. That's like year over year. You can't get any more accurate than that. Also, I want to congratulate again our Fire and EMS staff for the wonderful job they're doing. Again, also, I would like to state that I would like, before I run out of time, I want all this tabled. I want the MSBU tabled. I want to say that. I want to say we don't need $3,000 padding, padding the coffers at this time, sell the firehouses, and then recalculate and see where your funding is. Take out the damn bicycle paths that were put in, in line with the United Nations 2021, make emergency lanes for the poor first responders who have to go through and fight traffic on Tamiami Trail. Take out the stupid bicycle paths and make emergency paths. Start using some creative thinking. We're in new times here, we're in very challenging times. And again, I say, past performance is not an indicator of future outcomes. We have to start putting on new hats, thinking creatively, doing new things, tapping into the resources of the community, responding to the community. What else is there? I'm so upset. I'm a proponent of Jesus Christ, and I don't want anybody who does not live to his standards to talk about church, because church is synonymous with what he said. If you love me, you will keep my commandments. So keep church out of it in a public forum if you're not going to honor him in your private life. As far as, I don't know what else. I am so upset with this because this is set. This is set according to old models, old thinking, old ways. There's so much more that can be done. There's so much more creativity. And yes, I don't, I don't, I would like people to look at the generation coming up. We don't understand what's coming up. I fully understand what's coming up. I understand what's going on in the colleges. I understand what's going on in the schools. I fought in the state of New York for years. I went and I sat on Commissioner Sobel, Commissioner of Education. I was the parent representative for the state of New York. I know exactly what's going on. And I know with creative thinking, I was able to sit back for 10 years, the education program in the state of New York, because they based on consensus-based decision makings, and I would not consent to most of their planning. You can do that. I have confidence in you. I have heard you speak, but I've heard the people speak too, and the people can't afford it. Do you know that I've only been here a couple of years, and I'm paying 80% of what I'm paying on my mortgage goes to the new FEMA redistricting? It goes to insurance, it goes to the taxes. I'm looking at land in Missouri. I would have been an asset here. I would have been an asset to all of you. I've got some experiences in my life that'd set your hair on fire, but I don't know that I can afford to stay here. I'm asking you people, table this. Table this MSBU business. Look again. And also, I want to say that the people who are living in the rural districts are the ones who are increasing the response times. They are the more capable people who know how to put out a fire, and they have an expectation of a longer response time, and if they didn't want it, they wouldn't move there. Come on, people, let's think. Thank you very much.
You state your name for the record, ma'am.
Sharon Peneo.
Thank you.
Hi, Kat Pellegrino. Let me start saying, I've been going to Commissioner meetings, I don't know, for three years. Walton County, now here, this is my home. I served my country 23-plus years in the military. Integrity is doing the right thing all the time, even when no one is looking. That's what I was taught growing up. That's what was impressed upon me while I was in the military. We, the people of Charlotte County, feel that you, the Commissioners, do not hear us. The meetings are not convenient for us. The way they are conducted is frustrating at best. When we ask a question, we don't get an answer right away. It's supposed to be civil discourse. We should automatically get an answer from you, not wait till the end, or never hear from you, or have a speak before the actual meeting with our questions. It's ridiculous. We have a bloated budget. You guys could cut your salaries, these high-paying salaries. The internet is amazing because everything's on the internet, and if you know your way around a computer, you can find out all kinds of things, and I think you all know that. So why not cut some of these salaries? That would help out, because you know what's coming in the next 18 months? We haven't even hit recession yet. Like I said, I'm retired military, I have contacts, I have network people. They're telling me what's coming. I have people at the border, I have people overseas. You don't know what's coming, but you better open your eyes and listen to we, the people, because we vote you in office. And I'm gonna tell you right now, we are actively looking to find candidates to run. We are tired of it. We're not gonna take it lying down. So with that said, why don't you just look at your budget, table this like she said, go back to the drawing board, there's other avenues, use them. Stop screwing over the people with fixed incomes, you're pushing them out of their homes. That's not right, and it's not godly at all. So if you call yourself a Christian, I don't think so.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is John Hous. My wife and I here, moved here My wife and I here, moved here recently, just in time for a hurricane, I guess, which has been great. So, sorry.
There you go.
Anyway, we just got here in time for a hurricane. So all of our stuff, we're fixed income and we have gotten hit by a huge increase in our insurance, of course, trying to find a second one. We've been fighting our insurance for, it's coming up on a year now, plus the deductible that we have to pay for that. Plus, we've had to go to a public adjuster and that's been an extra couple thousand there, plus other things that they're not paying for that I've had to repair myself now. So on top of all of that now, things are getting hard, of course, across the board, fuel, food, anything to do with that. So it's pretty hard to take on these things. I did notice in your presentations, I would like to find, you poked at Constance at a point of what happened to those lots. And I think it's a really good thing to go back and look at that and see what has happened to that revenue. Because you've pointed out that, you know, some went to here, some went to there. Where did it go? That is a huge chunk of money as you're representing it right now to these people as to, hey, we've lost this revenue. Where did it go? And why did it go? And you're finding out this now? That's a bad backstep in my mind, looking at that. The other thing is you look at your budget that you're proposing to do for this and, okay, maybe it is the fact that you're having to catch up. These are terrible times in terms of staffing across the board. Several people that we've know have moved out of the medical industry, medical, nurses and so forth, couldn't stand it with COVID, left that industry. So getting people to come into it is very difficult, understand that. So, but at this point, when you look at that budget and you proposed right now, I believe it's 15% down to 12% and then 6% per year, and you calculate that out, that's 100% increase over that period of time. You doubled your budget in that period of time. Look at the numbers, it's really straightforward, it's doubled. I would love to have that in any one of my investments that I've tried to make in 10 years to double my money. That doesn't seem quite proportionately correct. Now, maybe something went wrong that you're having to recover from, but it doesn't sound like it in the timeframes that you're looking at in terms of response times and so forth, it doesn't seem to add up. So I look at it in that respect as you're asking for, in that period of time, 100% increase in budget over that period of time. Or what are you recovering from? What happened that required that much input from your community? Some things go wrong, I understand that. But what went wrong in this case? It doesn't sound like there's a problem that requires that much influx of funds from your community at a point where you're now at 200%, you know, doubled your budget in that period of time. Hopefully, I've done my math right, but I believe I have. So anyway, I'd really like to hear from you because you poked at that. I think it's a really good point as to where did that revenue go and why did it leave this place? And right now, there's the growth factors, and that's what I hadn't seen at any point in here tonight, is the growth factors. We saw the number of response time, but what is the growth factor for this? What are the projections for it? I haven't seen something that corresponds to, this is your growth in this community in support of your taxes, revenues, et cetera, that match that for your response, et cetera. So anyway, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone, I'm Matt Cancar. Bear with me while I kind of go through a checklist. I agree with the sentiment that was mentioned about the properties, how they're being reduced. This is kind of a rhetorical question because I genuinely, I genuinely don't know the answer. And I'm, I'm thinking about the last meeting when they were talking about how people were combining lots for, I believe agriculture and also residential areas when you have like your neighboring lots and that people were still paying for those lots before they were merged together. So I would think all these ag lands that are being merged together would still be in the original zone form before the exemption. I just want to put that out there and see if anyone else might follow up on that in the future. I like the idea of the overtime, that was kind of one of my proposed solutions for this part of my speech was that I was thinking that the overtime, the overtime hours obviously are paying a more than one rate. And then if you have a new firefighter, it's probably a lower rate because they're a newer, less seasoned person, that's a really good cost reduction option. I think that was a good idea and I liked the idea of that, but why not a long time ago? The anticipation is my concern. I'm also worried about the future. In order to keep up with this rapid, some double-digit on three category, at least on your tax bill, the fire MSBU, the 25, and there's a couple others that are really large where the others are, I believe back to 2021 levels, if I recall, the mileage rate. It seems like there's a problem there where, what if we have a huge revenue shortfall? What are you going to have to do to the mileage rate when we have our recession? Because it's coming, like, there's no way we can escape this now, I think. So what are we going to do when we haven't been anticipating for the future? If you're having a 25% hike, where did that hole come from? I saw, I saw the presentation and I kind of grasped it, but it seemed like we've had a revenue boon to Charlotte County because you have all these new people that are not homestead, not save your homes, highest homeowner, I'm sorry, home costs. So you're getting these high revenues coming in, you should have had the biggest budget and the biggest savings last year, which is what I said a year ago, because you're not going to have the same one this year, which here it is, and next year it's going to be a lot lower. So I'm, that's my anticipation, so we'll see, I was right last year. So anyway, whatever the case may be, I think we need to consider what's going to be happening in the future there. So anticipation, I think, might be a problem. If we're recovering double-digit percents on multiple categories, there has to be something wrong. There has to be some way that we can anticipate better and even the trajectory better. And then, let's see here. So we had the biggest inflation, yes, we had inflation costs, but the biggest inflation was in house prices, they're unrealized gains for the homeowner, but they're realized gains for the county because of your revenue increase being taken annually. So last thing here, I want to say, I was in that place when we were waiting outside in the hall and I spoke last, I think you remember. I was talking to people the whole time. They were mad about the 25% tax hike and they were anticipating potential things. I never heard one person, and I talked to at least 100, we'll say, I never heard one person say that they thought the whole thing was 25%. But they did think that it was likely there would be other big increases and there are, percentage-wise. There's at least three double-digit. And then, I'm not trying to be rude about this, but I don't want to be compared to failed states. People fled and that's when we should anticipate. We have an influx of people, influx of money, we have these house prices going up, that's a revenue boon for the government. Of course, there's a negative part because the inflation also is eating part of that, but the biggest inflation was in the unrealized gains of the people paying the higher taxes that they haven't realized yet. So that's important to realize. And yeah, so please don't compare us to failed states, we've got to do better, we've got to do better than us, no less, better than New Jersey, no thanks, or New Illinois, I'm from Illinois. I'm not trying to be mean to New Jersey, believe me, Illinois. Okay, so thank you so much for listening, I appreciate it. I also want to say before I go, because I didn't say this, I appreciate people doing their job, it's not about that. This is, I think there's some things that, that we have to look at how it appears and then how we go forward in a more gradual, transparent, equitable fashion where people are not going to be looking and saying, what is going on here? Why is there not transparency? Why are there these deals or arrangements that might not even be corrupt between individuals? It's just like they're naturally, systemically problematic. So I think we need to contemplate that as well and I appreciate the time and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a question, I don't know if anyone will answer, but the first hearing was an MSBU public hearing, I don't know if I'm correct. How come that was three minutes instead of five if anyone can explain toward the end? I don't understand that at all. This is, this isn't about really overtime, although the guy that got paid the highest is about 60 years old. And I noticed Matt just made a comment, was very intelligent that if they're going to pay overtime, they might want to give it to people that are newer instead of the oldest ones there getting ready to retire because that's probably why he got paid so much. This is about bloated, bloated salaries. There's over probably a million dollars of salaries and benefits sitting at this front table. Salaries are bloated. Again, I'm going to start off where I ended, where I started before. Government bureaucrats and politicians conspire against us with false competition between counties. He keeps saying, no, other counties, the other counties. Politicians that say they have to spend more than other counties with over-the-top salaries or we're going to lose employees or can't get them. While the other county politicians are saying the same thing about us, look at them, they pay more, so we got to pay more. It's just a circle. And we have the Florida Association of Counties. It's almost all the Commissioners. They can get together and stop this competition and set a reasonable pay. These guys do a good job. I understand they probably work hard, but they also sleep a third of the time, so, you know, 50,000, 55,000 is fine, but there has to be a max on the raises. There has to be a max on this payroll and it isn't just the firefighters, it's the payroll all across the, the board. Have any of the Commissioners involved in this Association of Counties spoken up for an end to this vicious, vicious circle of salary competition between counties? Are they beholden to the public unions? Are they just meeting and laughing at the peasants while promoting this salary competition? Is this the professional wrestling of politics? Government used to compete against the marketplace, meaning companies, until it mysteriously changed and now it competes against other counties. The truth is, once they blew past those average salaries long ago, they invented competing against other counties or will lose employees. If all the counties in Florida didn't compete with high salaries, would our public employees all leave the state? I don't think so. Or would other states follow suit under pressure from their own voters and taxpayers and get the salaries at least down even with the public sector and the benefits? The salary, the salary competition is a deliberate scheme, a planned deception to fleece the taxpayers, nothing less. Taxpayers in other states are realizing the future has arrived. The Wall Street Journal reports that state and local governments in the U.S. currently have $3.5 trillion in unfunded pension liabilities. Politicians must raise taxes dramatically to fund this. Why? And we're going in the same path, we're staying on the same path. It's unsustainable. It's not that the collection of taxes is unsustainable, it's the pay is unsustainable. And stop saying it's only $51, a $51 increase or a $50 here or a price of a cup of coffee because that's on top of the $200 here, the $300 here and all the other MSBU's and taxes. I don't pay a lot of taxes, but I care about people that do. Try, try the little word game tricks with little kids that don't understand, because we do. And everyone that's out there, remember, and there's nobody left, I guess, and that's terrible, this first meeting and this meeting is so disappointing. Three of these tax and spend Commissioners are running for office in less than a year. Please vote appropriately when you vote. Thank you all for listening to me, even though I wasn't very friendly.
Thank you, Mr. Custer. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Keep it brief, gentlemen. Dave Kalin, Charlotte County resident. This is the notice I received from your board about the taxes. It says from last year, I'm going from $203.77 for my home for my fire tax to $764.13. That's a pretty substantial increase. Only to find out, the sent notice you sent to me was done incorrect. I now have my trim notice with the new proposed rate. It's a little more in line and reasonable. It's the $254 that you're proposing. How many other folks got the same notice in the mail that they were looking at that significant of an increase and came to the last meeting very upset? You guys are in charge of that. Sending out the correct information is important because you can diffuse it before it starts. Second, Commissioner Constance, you asked where a lot of these properties went. I would implore you to go to yesterday's code enforcement hearing and watch it. A gentleman purchased a piece of property from this county, not through tax sale, but a direct purchase and was not notified when he bought it as a building lot. It had been turned into conservation by the county for the scrub jay habitats to accomplish the removal of scrub jays from other adjacent properties in other areas. So you now have an irate resident and I will tell you, he was extremely animated. And your code enforcement hearing officer did not help diffuse the situation, only escalated it. They were arguing over a nuance, a timing issue that one wanted to argue when it was not. The situation here is though the county created an unbuildable lot, didn't tell the buyer. And when I heard the representing attorney from the county stand up and say, and it is recorded, do you due diligence, buyer beware? You guys have an obligation to the public. If you're going to sell us a bill of goods, make sure it's a good bill of goods. That was appalling to watch. On another note, I would encourage you to watch the August 2nd code enforcement hearing. The number of people that are homeless right now because of the financial situation has not only been exacerbated by Hurricane Ian, so many people still homeless. I know we all want to pretend they don't exist, that the campers don't exist, let's create a task force to get them off of properties. These are problem people. These are people that don't have homes. These are people that, many of them don't have resources. We have to have some compassion here. I would implore this board, pull a little bit of rights back to the people's property. You give that back to us, we're probably not going to be as pissed off paying a little more in taxes. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
David Grossman, I'm sure you'll remember him earlier. I want to address not so much your inability or your taxation, but your revenue sourcing. Because what we found in examining your budgets don't seem to comport with the emotional pleas to tugging the heartstrings of what you've all expressed here and with the union and your fire department. They're very necessary. Unfortunately, your impact study of 2021 and your study of, from Fitch and Fitch, don't support it. Your response times are at normal, they are good. You only need one extra fire department or fire station and that only reduces your response time by 2%. You're hitting your metrics, you don't need the money. But let's assume all your emotional pleas are accurate. Where is your revenue sources? Now, you have major expansion in the county, it's called Allegiant Travel Company. They are one of your largest developers at this point. They have an expansion at the Punta Gorda Airport. Punta Gorda Airport has an economic impact, their published document of $1.7 billion for last year. They're operating at a 29% margin increase and they expect those profits and revenues to go higher, partially because of Allegiant, because Allegiant is building a new expansion of a terminal over there. But that's not the only thing Allegiant Travel owns. They're also doing the Sunseeker Resort. Now, the Sunseeker Resort was an interesting project because it required this commission to enter an agreement in 2018 that developed the impact statement. Now, you've all signed off on your financial disclosure documents that you took training and to become the Commissioners. And that training included something called the Impact Statement Handbook. And you were all given this by reference and it's something that is required when you develop your impact analysis. In that says, and in your impact study of 2021, it says the capital improvements for fire stations will come from impact funds. Impact funds are necessary, so you look to those new developments to do that. Allegiant Travel is one of that with the Sunseeker, but that's not their only development property. There's actually two others. There's the golf course that they own and there's the corporate headquarters they're building at Lake Susie. These are all four major developments that should be considered. These are all four major developments that should be considered in the impact revenue stream. Now, what's important about that is the Sunseeker Resort is touted to have about nine hundred units, condominiums and hotel rooms. Condominiums are generally taxed at a higher rate than hotel rooms, because hotel and motel rooms have an ability to generate room tax. Now, what we had, though, was a change in the definition of what constitutes a motel room. Now, this change, this board considered, and it was so novel, that one current commissioner said, and it was quoted, saying, "I wasn't briefed on how the zoning designation change from condominium to motel room would affect impact fee revenues. However, he, this commissioner, expressed confidence in the expertise of the county staff to what was appropriate." Well, that expertise might have been misplaced, because county impact fees change from thousands of dollars per unit to hundreds of dollars per unit. Now, one way you wonder why you would do that, what's the benefit to the county for that? Well, I had to look into who actually owns Allegiant Travel. Allegiant Travel is diversified into multiple investment portfolio groups, right? You might recognize some of these: BlackRock, Morgan Stanley, Invesco, Nuveen TD Asset Management, Fidelity, Raymond James. These are all owners of Allegiant. Allegiant's currently trading at about eighty-nine dollars, but to projected, once Sunseeker goes online, to go up to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty. So anybody that's holding a stock portfolio that has any of those investment firms stands to make a lot of money when this stock goes up. Now, I was able to get the financial disclosures from all five commissioners here. And in those financial disclosures, it determines four of the five have holdings.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Well, I'll leave those holdings. I have those documents for anybody that's interested in looking at them.
And their public record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Gordon Smith. I'd like to speak on what is a public safety issue in regards to animal control and the fact that the county has no county shelter to properly care for the animals that we have to have taken care of. Animal Welfare League entered into a contract years ago, and approximately ten years ago, there was a hearing when the county wanted to do away with that contract, and if any of you were here, you recognize that there was an overflow crowd at that hearing. So I believe they went into a year-to-year contract that rolled over with small increases each year. So it costs the county right now about thirty thousand dollars a month for all of their animal services, which means basically every animal, because by contract, we have to take every animal in that the county brings in. We also have, we don't have to, but we do take in animals from the city of Punta Gorda, because they have no animal service and have no shelter services. I work with and travel with the Humane Society and with the ASPCA, and I've seen a lot of times what are called hoarding, what are called puppy mills. I know that the people that run the shelter will tell you that everything is okay there, that all shelters are overcrowded, and they are, but all shelters don't have to take in everything that's dropped off at their door like we do. What you have right now is basically warehousing of animals. We have more animals right now in collapsible kennels on the floor than we actually have in regular kennels. Shelter was designed for thirty-one dogs. We have over twice as many in our one adoption building, an equal number in the intake building. They are stacked on top of each other. The county has to come to the realization that it has to build a county shelter. No one from the county came after Ian to see if we had emergency power, food, water, see if we could clear the grounds of trees that were down. There was no need to, because we're not considered a county shelter. So really, it wasn't your responsibility for any of those things. It was a responsibility of the volunteers, it was a responsibility of people that worked at the shelter. The difference is, other counties, when they have a problem, the county commissioners step up and realize there's a problem and do something about it. When Babcock Ranch builds out more, when Westport builds out more, when the city of Punta Gorda has more people coming to it, this problem is going to get worse. We can tout ourselves on being a no-kill shelter, but we have animals that are tearing apart their kennels, because nobody is walking them. They're spending twenty-three-plus hours a day in kennels. You may have two volunteers come in to take care of seventy animals that are on the floor. That means those animals get to go outside pee and poop. That's it. If that was a condition that you found in any kind of hoarding or puppy mill, they would close it down. It's a terrible situation, it has to be addressed, it can't be ignored any longer, it is never going to get better. That train left the station for the Animal Welfare League to be able to take care of the needs of Charlotte County. It's changed a lot in sixty years. I love animals, I've devoted the last twelve years of my life to traveling around with the organizations, helping the animals and rescuing them. I quit two weeks ago, because I couldn't go into that building anymore. It killed me, but it was a decision that I had to make, and I made it. So I would hope that some of you would try and address this situation however you can. I don't know if it's the penny tax. Citrus County is building a new twelve million dollar shelter, they have half the amount of animals that we have, and their shelter right now is about the same size as ours. We have double the population. It's just something that has to be addressed, it can't be ignored.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up. And this didn't have anything to do with the public hearing, but I wanted to give you the latitude to speak today.
I think.
I support my board and thank my board for not having objection to that, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if this was proper.
Your message has been received, and I've also been, and I'm not supposed to do this, but I'm not getting knocked down yet, but I've had conversation with other people involved with the organization over the last three weeks.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Please, come down and look at the shelter.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I am a fairly new resident to Punta Gorda and delighted to be here.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Gary Krieger.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Deutsch, you had said something in your comments earlier about how great it was, excuse me, to be here, and not up in, I think you referenced, a blue state, where your kids are paying, I think, triple about for property taxes, to what you had mentioned. We moved here, bought our house two years ago. The time we purchased, property values and demand for housing was great, there were bidding wars going on, there were very few properties on the market. We ended up buying a nineteen eighty-one fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-five-square-foot house, because that's all that was available, that was decent, that we wanted to live Previous residents claimed that their property taxes were in the thirty-five-hundred-dollar range. We got a supplemental bill after we bought the house that jumped it up to almost sixty-five-hundred. That was in September of twenty-one. Last year, the twenty-twenty-two property taxes, our tax bill was eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. And this year, the proposal is about the same, unless you don't increase it, in which it's something over ten thousand for a forty-year-old fifteen-hundred-square-foot house. That is outrageous and it's absurd. According to what I have read, the growth in property taxes in this county from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-three is ninety-seven point six percent. They have virtually doubled in ten years. However, my taxes went up seventy-some percent in one year. It's unconscionable. I don't understand the millage rates, which put Charlotte County at something like twenty percent above Sarasota County, above, about fourteen percent above Lee County. For our relatively sleepy little community, it doesn't make any sense. Things are just out of control, and budgets have to be reined in. I appreciate our fire, I appreciate our police, I appreciate the services that we have, but we can't just continue in every regard to continue to raise taxes. It's just, A, it's not right, B, it is an imposition on people who move here. You have new homes that are going in, that are upping your revenue source. Practically every lot I've seen that's being built on is being snapped up as soon as it's completed. So, yeah, you do have opportunities to raise tax base, but this shouldn't be the kind of community that's going to drive people away, because they don't want to or can't afford to live in a little house in a lovely community. It's just not right. So, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate the ability to speak here, and I hope you rein it in. It needs to be reined in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Mr. Kalin.
Yeah, my name is David Kalin, Sr. I'm going to pick up where I left off, things are afforded a little more time. And most people are probably aware of these numbers, but it's the federal government that drives our economy for the nation, we're very dependent upon interaction with other nations. We're headed towards thirty-three trillion dollars in debt, but that's known debt. The unfunded mandates, combined with that, takes us over two hundred trillion dollars. Everett Dirksen one time said, "A few billion here, a few billion there," and pretty soon it's a lot of money. A trillion is a thousand billion. Give you a stack of one trillion dollars, and I ask you to count that. Want to take a guess how long it would take to count one trillion? Thirty-three thousand years. Unimaginable funds. If we take a look at the Federal Reserve, which has nothing federal about it, it's international bankers running it, there's nothing reserved. They have two choices in front of them, they box themselves in, either hyperinflation or hyperdeflation. It's coming, there's no stopping it. Pick your choice. What it's going to do to this nation is incomprehensible, we've never lived it before. I don't disagree with increases in salaries and the great folks that do the EMS, and our great police and the rest of them. I think timing's the issue right now. Hold off just a little bit. We're all going to have to pull the belt in, everybody. But right now, if you were to implement this, and then six months down the road, we have already hit the brick wall, what are you going to do then? We take a look at it, U.S. banks are collapsing. Yeah, we got through Silicon Valley Bank and the rest, which sucked up everything out of the FDIC. People think their money's insured in the banks. One point three percent of deposits that are covered by the FDIC is all they had, and that was eaten up. Who's going to bail them out? We have over two hundred banks right now that are determined to be insolvent and ready to crater within the next several months. BlackRock and the rest, I've heard that name mentioned, are pulling their investments out of the United States, because they know what's coming. U.S. banks hold one point eight trillion dollars in unrealized losses, out of a total of two point two trillion dollar deposits. That's because they invested in federal notes that have gone inverted, and now they got to cash in that money in order to get the depositors, well, no, the investors, they're not depositors anymore due to Dodd-Frank, the bank can take their money. Most people don't realize that, what Dodd-Frank did. I was in the financial industry at the time when that occurred, it was rather interesting reading. It was a shell of legislation passed that the bureaucrats filled. If we take a look at it, speaking of the Federal Reserve, if you haven't read the book, The Creature from Jekyll Island, put out by G. Gordon, Edward Gordon, great read to tell you what the Federal Reserve really is and what their plan is for us. I think, looking at where we are as a nation and how foolish we've been with our spending and financing, I think most of what I see with Charlotte County has not followed that, but you're on the cusp that you could. Reassess, please. Protect the constituents you have, protect the county. We got to take care of our county employees, I agree with that a hundred percent, but right now, timing is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Gentlemen?
Ms. Chair?
We need to close the public hearing.
Chair, I see no one else rising, move to close public hearing.
Say it.
Motion second to close in the opposition? Hearing not a passage down, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. One of the things about setting the rates today, it puts us on a glide path. Nothing prohibits the board, should things change next year, we can readdress the rate structure. So if some of the things that I'm hearing about the future of the economy come to be true, obviously, we can make those adjustments. Just because we vote on it today doesn't mean next year, you know, we reassess the budget annually, so it can be adjusted or eliminated. Whatever the conditions require us to do, we would address it at that point. There were some comments about our firefighters spending a third of their time sleeping, and they're not running into fires all day. You haven't been to Fire Station One, and I got to tell you something, anybody can Google this, and this probably isn't going to help recruitment of our firefighters. Suicide rates, higher than the national average. Mental health, higher than the national average. Anxiety, higher than the national average. Divorce rate, higher than the national average. It is a demanding job, you go on to scenes that none of us want to go see, and they deal with it every day, and, you know, I'm just saying, to diminish what they do, saying they just sleep a third of the time, is a disservice to their profession. And they can't say anything, but I can. And, I mean, that just needs to be said, I mean, they're part of our workforce, and, you know, frankly, I find that kind of insulting. But everybody's entitled to have their free speech, and I respect that. In terms of Sunseeker, and I've talked about this often, and there's a myth out there that somehow we approve the rezoning for Sunseeker. That was a community redevelopment area approved over thirty years ago, I think it was in nineteen ninety-two. It was a blighted area, and certain zoning allowances were put within the CRA to help encourage redevelopment. Sunseeker is a poster child for redevelopment in Charlotte County. What is CRA supposed to do? Increase the tax base, get rid of the blight. Everything they've done is by right. They did not come to the board for approvals or financial assistance. They actually went to each owner individually and offered them top dollar to willing sellers. I found out about Sunseeker after they closed on ninety-nine percent of the property, and then I had an appointment to talk to one of the principals to say, "We're Sunseeker, we just bought a bunch of property in Charlotte Harbor." I didn't know about it till after the fact, because that's how the free market works. They don't have to come to the commission and ask for permission to buy property from people. So there was no eminent domain, there was no taking, we didn't give them any parkland, we gave them nothing. And I keep hearing the Sunseeker question that somehow we're benefiting from Sunseeker. We didn't give them any approvals to do what they're doing. So I just, that's another myth that's out there. It's frustrating, but we need to continue to... It's frustrating, but we need to continue to give the information, the correct information as we know it, and try to, you know, stop some of that. Now, I have a question for Gordon, and just to reconfirm, there's been a lot of question on the future growth of Charlotte County and the new homes being put on the tax rolls. Was that taken into account with your projections going forward?
Yes, and that's what I was trying to show on the other slides. Fire is not funded based on ad valorem, on property value. It's based on a per parcel basis. So, as properties are developed, they come off vacant, they become occupied, there is an increase, but it's only about $100 increase, a little over $100 increase between a vacant property and an occupied property. And that's also what I was trying to show on the other slide, where if we converted to an MSTU so that you paid based on the growth that we're seeing, anyone who had a home valued at more than $150,000 would be paying more, and in some cases, much, much more, obviously, than what the current per parcel rate is.
Yeah, and there was a gentleman who spoke about his taxes going up, I don't know if he's still here. What happens is, when you look at a homeowner who had his property homesteaded for a period of time, he's locked in because of Save Our Homes. When you buy a new house, your sales price is, becomes public record based on the doc stamps you pay on the deed. And the property appraiser picks that up, and you reset the market. So, if somebody was paying on a homestead property based on $100,000 assessed property, and you buy it for half a million dollars, guess what? You're paying taxes now on the half a million dollars. That's the way it's always been, that's nothing new. So, the new homeowners coming in, buying those properties, reset it. You can't look at what the old homeowner paid on a homesteaded property. And a lot of people, I've had a lot of people come to me with that issue because there's people buying this and they're seeing, you know, last year, and they're seeing it on their tax records this year, and they're shocked. It's not because we raised taxes. We actually lowered the millage rate last year and kept it reduced this year because we looked at our needs, and the needs didn't require us to have the millage rate we had at the time. So, we lowered it, and we kept it low this year, saving the taxpayers well over $10 million between the two years. As far as Sunseeker, there was a comment that you can get more money from Sunseeker in taxes if they were condos. Yeah, their original concept was condos, but they decided that wasn't where they wanted to be, and they made a private business decision to go to a hotel concept, and it's true. Hotels pay less in impact fees than condos. And so, I'm just saying, we don't, again, going back to my original comment, we don't control what Sunseeker does, that's a private, individual, free-market system. If they decided that was better business model for them, that's what they did. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. There's one other MSBU that has an increase, a significant increase, and we had some testimony this evening. We did on July the 17th, that's Suncoast Waterway. And the current resolution, Table 1, shows what we discussed at July the 17th, raising it from its current $738.07 to 1,525. We had testimony on the 17th from Ms. Grogan. This evening, we had Mr. Clark and Mr. Ferguson. All those individuals, including Mr. Bronnall, have requested and submitted applications to be on the new Suncoast Waterway MSBU Advisory Board, which we will vote on next Tuesday. We'll now have an advisory board. So, I support, basically, what they've been asking. We talked about a little bit at the 17th, keeping their assessment rate at the 738.07, not raising it to 1,525. Let the MSBU Advisory Committee over the next year work on what their needs are out there, working with staff, and then we'll go from there. But I would support revising this current resolution to the current number, not raising it to 1,525. So, I will make a motion
Thank you.
On the resolution, to approve the resolution with that modification.
Second. Motion second to approve that modification, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, is there any opposition to the motion? And we're holding, yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, for the record, we're talking about revised resolution packet option 2.
Two.
I wrote number 2, right there, Gordon.
Okay. Yep. Okay, we have a motion second for revised resolution packet 2. Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, packet option 2 is approved.
With the modification to Suncoast?
With the modification as indicated by Commissioner Doherty, and made in the motion. All right, I have to make some maneuvers here. Sorry. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes that, this portion. And so, the MSBU special meeting is adjourned, and we will now call to order the public hearing on proposed county budget fiscal year 2023, 2024. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. And I will turn it over, well, we'll have to do citizens' input on agenda items. So, anyone wishing to speak on the agenda items on this meeting may, I've got cards. You'll also have a public hearing. So, at this portion, you get three minutes, at public hearing, you get five minutes. And my first card is David Grossman. My second card is Stacy Ware. My third card is Kat Pellegrino. I'm sorry? Okay.
One question, and walk away?
Yes, sir, I'll allow it if there's no objection from the board. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm just curious, that was the resolution for the waterway, not the fire, is it included in the budget, not with the?
It included every MSBU that was considered here. Thank you. Is David Grossman here? I think he's left. Ms. Ware?
Oh, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Stacy Ware. I'm Finance Director for Roger D. Eaton, Charlotte County Clerk of the Circuit Court and County Comptroller. I'm here in regards to our office's budget request for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. I am pleased to report the Clerk's Office has successfully reduced our budget for each of the last seven years since Clerk Eaton has been in office and is the only constitutional officer to do so. This year, the reduction is 1.9% for a total seven-year reduction of 11.9%. In addition to lowering our budget each year, the Clerk's Office has returned excess funds to the Board of County Commissioners and its taxpayers each of the past five years totaling approximately $3.1 million. We are able to do this because of our services have become more efficient, and in addition, our customer service has increased to a 98% approval rate. Our office and Clerk Eaton are proud to support the Board's goal of an efficient and effective government through transparency and accountability benefiting the citizens of Charlotte County. I respectfully request the approval of our budget submitted on behalf of the Clerk's Office. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Thank you. My next card, this is on the budget, is Sharon Pennio. Okay. Mr. Smith, Gordon Smith, indicated for public safety, that would have been the previous meeting. Mr. Russell, is he still here? Michael Cartwright. Gary Krieger. Tammy Kalin, looks like she left, Dave. Okay, thank you. Dave Kalin. It doesn't say senior or junior, so. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Paul Haber. Okay, Mr. Kesselring.
Just one thing I forgot, my taxes went up 29%. Everyone says it's misinformation that the whole tax rate's going up 25. Mine went up 29, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kanker?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. And I have Felicia Jové? Felicia? Okay, I have no further cards. So, with that, we will move on to the presentation. What's that? I'm sorry? I called. Well, actually, you were first and he was second, sorry. Go ahead, come up, go ahead. Sorry about that, Dave.
Dave Kalin, Charlotte County resident. We'll start with my tax assessment here for this year, my trim notice. My personal residence, 28% increase, no construction on the site. Vacant lot, that one was just purchased, so I don't have a comparable. An additional vacant lot with no structures, 292% increase. Another vacant lot, 37% increase. Another vacant lot, these are all agricultural, 42% increase. Another vacant lot, 51% increase. I'm very confused as to why none of them are all equal, because all these lots are right together. They're all used for the same purpose. So, I have sat down with the taxing authority, the
Frazier?
Yes, and so, it is a very convoluted system in the calculations. A little more easier reading would be a lot better, because it's not a 3% max, and I know vacant lots don't fall under that, that's under Save Your Homes. But under Save Your Homes, I'm still confused why I got a 28% increase. This board continues to tax the citizens like we're your personal bank account. I've had to reduce my spending and work harder just to exist in this current economy. I've had to start new businesses to try to create other revenue streams just to keep up. It's time for you gentlemen now to start reducing and looking. Earlier, Commissioner Teseo said, "Where's the bloat?" Do you guys really need five secretaries? Is it that busy? Do we need to continue to purchase palm trees to beautify our roads in this economic condition? That is millions per year. We get into a lot of these little spitting matches that we could keep going back and forth on what's bloat, what's a level of service, what's important and what's not important. I'm all for having a beautiful community, but at the same time, I'm all for not being homeless. So, let's continue to work on this budget. And make no mistake, gentlemen, people are angry. You're working on making us broke at this point. This is a recipe for a revolution. It happened in 1773 with the Tea Party. At this pace, in this political environment, the next revolution's around the corner. There's nothing more motivated or driven than a group of citizens pushed to the edge of financial ruin over regulation or homelessness. Over the past few years, I've watched this board weaponize code enforcement. It's another revenue stream. I would encourage you to please reduce that. It's all my time I have for now.
Thank you, sir. I'll throw it out there, is there anyone else? I read all the cards, but was there anyone else? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move into the presentation. Mr. Berger, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, Commissioners, this is the first public hearing for the fiscal year 2425 budget. In terms of the agenda, we're going to review the budget process very quickly, look at the proposed millage rates, do a short presentation of the budget, and then, of course, what we're looking for tonight is for you to adopt the tentative rates and budgets, and then, of course, those will be brought back to you again at the September 19th, second public hearing. So, review of the budget process, always go through this very quickly, more for the public's sake than for yours, because I know you've got it memorized. Four major stages of the budget process. First stage is establishing broad goals, and of course, that's your responsibility in terms of, and you do that through your strategic planning process. Then, stage two, it turns back into the organization for us to develop approaches to achieving those goals and bringing those back to you. Stage three is then developing a budget. And by budget, we don't mean just the dollars in the sense that's all of the resources that come to bear, equipment, people, time, technology, all those things. And then, stage four, evaluating the performance, making adjustments, and of course, that happens on an ongoing basis. Every two weeks, you meet, and every two weeks, you make some kind of adjustment to that budget. This is just the same thing, only laid out as a calendar, just the amount of work and intensity that goes into the preparation of the budget. Back in November and December, we started this process shortly after Hurricane Ian. And the, what we do at that point in time is review the process with you. Normally, we do a citizen survey to get citizen input. However, the day the survey was to go out was two days after Ian, and so, we were not able to do the citizen survey this time. We did do an employee survey. We also expanded our practice so that we could get more input from stakeholders, use Teams meetings, those types of things, and got the information from the stakeholders and the experts in various areas. Compiled that information, brought it to you. You had in February your goal-setting workshop. Also, during that time, we put together the workshop and went through our capital projects plan at the beginning of the process. And our departments at that point in time were updating all of their information for the budget, their performance indicators, their budgetary requests, personnel, all of that, those aspects. During the month of March, we came back to you with a review of what we had heard, confirmation, went through some financial, long-term financial trends, and looked at our financial impacts going forward. At that point in time, during the month of March, I and my staff meet with every single department where we go through their budgetary requests in detail. That is kind of like a giant funnel, we look at everything in April. Then, a second set of meetings with administration at a much higher level, where we're looking at overall budgetary requests, goals, that sort of thing. And then, we bring all of that back to you in a series of workshops during the month of May around your strategic focus areas. During May and June, we're working on balancing the budget. It's not just one budget, as you see tonight, over 150 different funds, 500, over 500 unique budgets. During July, once we received the tentative valuation, we brought back to you the tentative budget for review. And then, of course, tonight, we're in the first public hearing, and on the 19th, we'll be going to the second public hearing. Terms of the millage rates, I always start out with this, the overall assessed valuation of the county, and Commissioners, going back to 1984 here, a long way back, and you can see, again, I make reference to this all the time, probably not anyplace else you're going to see this in the United States. In a two-year period of time, from 2005 to 2007, the overall valuation of property in this county doubled. Went from $12 billion to $24 billion. Over the next four years, all of that valuation was lost, that increase was lost, and we went back down to $12 billion. This is the first year we have now again exceeded where we were in 2007. So, we've seen very, very good growth over the last several years and very robust the last few years. These are the valuations for the next budget year. So, remember, these are as of January 2023. So, countywide, this is a chart that is looking at what the tentative rates were that were set a year ago, July, what the final rates were for last year's, the current year's budget, and then, what the tentative rates were as of this July. And I emphasize tentative because, of course, the property appraiser's still doing things, there will be a board review, all of those types of things, and there will be a finalized in October. So, if you look at where our valuation increases are for this past year, we're looking at about a little over a 13% increase from last year's rates to this year's rates. Now, that would have been higher, had it not been for Hurricane Ian. That rate would have been about 17%. So, the value that was lost as a result of the hurricane, and we went through that in quite a bit of detail in July. In terms of how that sits with other counties, just to give you some kind of comparison, and this again reflects Hurricane Ian. Manatee County, 21% increase. Sarasota, which had some Ian, but not as much as what we had, 14% increase. We fell in there at 13%. Lee County, which had significant growth, but only saw 6.5% growth in valuation because of the damage from Hurricane Ian. When I always emphasize that, regardless When I always emphasize that regardless of how much the valuation goes up, homesteaded properties are capped by either the rate of inflation or 3%, whichever is less. Obviously, this past year, inflation much higher, but that 3% cap applies. So, for those people who are homesteaded here in this county, those of us who live here and are homesteaded, our maximum rate, tax increase will be that 3%. Also like to emphasize where the tax dollar goes. You set the tax, you set the millage rates. However, when people get their trim notice, a very small portion of it actually goes to fund the operations that we're talking about here tonight. Out of that tax bill, you know, 41 cents of it goes to the school board. The sheriff's total budget is another 32 cents. The constitutional, other rest of the constitutionals, right around 5 cents. A little over, or just under 17 cents of every tax dollar goes to fund the operations that we're presenting here tonight under the Board of Commissioners. So, if we look at this in terms of the millage rates, Commissioners, three scenarios, same thing that you saw in July, and we try to do these scenarios as they're reflected on the trim notices. So, you know, if we kept the revenue the same as it was last year or this current year, if we kept the rate for next year, the millage, excuse me, if we kept the revenue for next year the same as it is for this current year, this would be the millage rate that would apply. And bottom line there, about 10.7 mils. If we keep the millage rate the same, which is what this entire budget is built on, then it's at 12.2 mils and $234 million in overall revenue. The last column is the maximum amount that the millage could be set at by board vote based on the Save Our Homes legislation. So, Save Our Homes legislation, roll this back, put these caps on, but it also gave you the ability to roll back the millage rate to capture all of that revenue should you feel that was necessary. That rate would put us at 18.2 mils and about $318 million worth of revenue. I always like to show this, because I like to get the message across. Save our homes, the difference between that and the $234 million, roughly $80 million on annual basis that save our homes, has saved the taxpayers of this county. So, very, very effective legislation in that effect. And of course, as I said, this budget is based on keeping the millage rate the same as it was. In terms of the proposed budget, Commissioners, I've been through this many times with you, but it's confusing to the public. When you look at, this is actuals for the last two years and what we're projecting for this current year, the budget for this current year, and then what we're proposing for the budget for 2324 and for the proposed budget for 2425, we do a two-year budget. It, if you look at that bottom line, it looks like we're going to be using $14 million worth of reserves in fiscal year '24. We know that's not true, and a lot of that just has to do with the way we're required to budget. State statute requires us to budget our revenues at 95%, to be very conservative. We also budget salaries and many other things at 100%. So, we know that's not gonna materialize, but it's the way we're required to budget. This is what I presented in July. If I do our projections based on our historical patterns, what we believe moving forward, building in the positions that have been added to the budget, this is what it looks like for the next 10 years. So, you know, the blue line, again, being the revenues, red line being the expenditures, and you can see how tight those are together, and the green line being that overall fund balance or reserves. And, you know, basically, very, very stable on the current budget that we've built. Just to show you how, I don't want to say deceptive, but how misleading the budget can be in terms of the way we're required to budget. That blue line is the same as the green line you saw before, based on our actual projections. The red line is if I projected our beginning balances based on what we're budgeting. We know we're not gonna spend 100%, we know we're gonna bring in more than 95%. So, very, very comfortable with the budget that we're presenting you, but I always like to put that out there, because it can be confusing. So, what we're looking at, the current year's adopted budget, net budget, was $1,332,4949. The proposed budget for next year is $1,146,192,867. And then, the planned budget, slightly lower in '2425, and again, that's because of the nature of the way that we're required to budget. Our capital projects budgeted in the first year of the project, even though they may last five years before we actually spend that money. And so, we know we'll be coming back to you next year with carryovers of capital dollars that need to be moved forward. I always like to throw this in there, because it can get very confusing, and when you see a billion-dollar budget, it's like, whoa. So, again, because of the way we're required to budget in the state of Florida, if I look at our total gross budget, it's at $1,888 million. And you can see that that blue bar, or that blue line, and you can see the increase over the last several years. However, in the state of, because of governmental accounting, and this gets... We have what we call funds, and you've heard the expression co-mingling of funds. We're not allowed to co-mingle funds, which means essentially, if we receive dollars for a specific purpose, it has to go into that fund, it cannot be mixed up with funds from other revenue sources. So, an example of this is, we receive property tax. That counts as a revenue coming into the general fund. However, we use part of that money to match a grant. So, we transfer that money out of the general fund to the grant fund. So, it goes out of the general fund as a transfer out or an expenditure. So, we've counted it coming in as a revenue, we've counted it going out as expenditure, then it comes into the grant fund. So, we count it as a revenue coming into the grant fund, and then it gets spent for its intended purpose and its expenditure. So, there's, the revenue and expenditures, when we consolidate everything, gets counted twice. Now, that's just governmental accounting, and that's the law for the way we account for things. But if you net those things out, you reduce that budget down to 1.6 billion. The other thing that we're required to do in the state of Florida is budget for reserves and beginning balances, even though we have no intention of spending those reserves and beginning balances. That's much like in your home situation, including your savings account in your budget, even though you know you're not gonna spend it. But, it's the law, and it's the way we have to show it. If you net those out, we're talking a $1.1 billion budget. The last line there is our actual operating budget. And you can see, that is at $548 million. Now, what do I mean by operating budget? Because of the nature of this county, the way it was developed, with the amount of infrastructure that we have, you know, general development came in here, built roads, dug canals, built bridges, pipelines, then turned it all over to the county. We have 2,000 miles of road, hundredsome miles of canals, couple hundred bridges, a lot of infrastructure to maintain. In the state of Florida, the county is responsible for anything that is not in an incorporated area. And of course, here we only have, Pontegorroa is the incorporated area. So, 90% of the county and 90% of the population lies under the jurisdiction of Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners. So, all of that capital has to be maintained, and so our capital budget is extremely intensive. So, if you look at our operating budget, it's now less than our capital budget. Operating budget, about $548 million, capital budget, $598 million. So, taking care of roads, bridges, all those things. Sorry, I went the wrong way. Just some other stats to run through as we're going through this. Countywide FTEs, you can see the growth in FTEs over the last eight years. I won't spend a lot of time on this, I know it's getting late. This is what Commissioner Constance referred to earlier. Yes, we've increased the position count, but for the last four years, even though we've increased the number of positions, the number of employees has actually stayed fairly flat, because it has been difficult to find people. This is our 20-year debt position, and you can see that that's steadily come down. This next is the same graph, but it shows it by type of debt, and you'll notice there, of course, the largest piece of debt is for the utilities, and that has come down steadily, but we are getting ready to go out for a bond issue, as you well know. So, that will go back up, the others consistently coming down, and we will shortly pay off Murdoch Village, the stadium, and Conservation Charlotte. Terms of our reserves, Commissioners, this is by our reserve policy for the general, for the ad valorem funds. Our policy is a 5% to 10% of the total ad valorem funds should be set aside for contingency, 5% to 10% for cash carryforward, and that has to do with the nature of our revenues. Our budget starts in October, most of our revenues don't start coming in until December, January, so there's that time period there where we need, where our revenues aren't coming in, but our expenditures are there. And then fiscal stabilization, and that has a minimum target of 15% of the general fund. As you can see, we're on the low end of both the contingency and the cash carryforward. Fiscal stabilization, not quite at 15%, but very close. But still, healthy reserves, $80 million for the general fund. This is countywide for reserves. That was, you know, again, we have those three categories, contingency, cash carryforward, and fiscal stabilization. However, remember, I talked about how capital-intensive our budget is. That future capital is, again, can't co-mingle funds. When we receive dollars that are designated for capital, when those are designated for projects, they, and the money is for future years, it goes into those reserves to hold the dollars there to make sure that it doesn't get used for other purposes. So, the future capital being the largest category there, and then restricted. And by restricted, we mean either by bond covenant or by law, whether it be the utilities or the landfill, those sorts of things. A thing I want to point out, and we've broken it down by major category here, the ad valorem, which you saw on the previous slide, the Transportation Trust Fund, which you will notice, this is the one we talked about in July, my biggest concern. We weren't able to deal with it this year, we're gonna have to deal with it in the next couple of years, but nothing in the reserves. The Building Construction Services Fund, all of the MSBUs combined, the fire, and you can see currently, that's what we were talking about earlier, sitting at $7 million. We will dwindle that down, but then build it back up. The capital projects is combined for all capital projects, utilities, utilities, and of course, the utilities has grown, because there are many pending projects coming on. The other thing I want to say on this is, going out for a bond issue, remember, the board actually gave authorization to increase the days of cash on hand in order to ensure that we get a decent bond issue. All other, and then the last one there, I want to point this out again. We went through this in detail in January or in July, but the hurricane fund, which is the fund that we created to put all the expenses from Ian until we're reimbursed for them, we're currently sitting there, sitting there with a $73 million negative balance in that fund. So, and that's what reserves are for, you know, when people say, "Why do you have to have so many reserves?" That's exactly why, and we're not done spending. As you know, we've put expedited projects in with FEMA. We're, we are gonna be waiting a long time. It's going to be two to five years before we see this money come back, and in the meantime, we're gonna be putting more money out the door, because we haven't even started rebuilding our parks, other than the insurance sections of it. So, those reserves are gonna hold us over until we finally get the reimbursement. We will, we will get it eventually, but it's gonna take a while. This is just total reserves by category, and again, the thing I want to point out here is how much of that growth is in capital projects and the MSBTUs, and again, that's capital also. This, I won't spend any time on this, this is just a five-year history that we always include in the budget and put on our website, so that people can see. For our major indicators, I've already covered the budget, our millage, and reserves and debt. So, now we move into the portion of the budget that is prescribed by statute. It's very, very structured in terms of what we have to do. So, I'm gonna actually read directly from the script that's included in the packet there. Excuse me. And remember, what we're asking tonight, we will take this by major fund section. You pass the millage rates first, and then, the second resolution, which is the budget. Now, again, this is the first public hearing, so the millage rates that you set tonight can be reduced at the second public hearing, but they cannot be increased. For the ad valorem countywide funds, the proposed county millage rate of 6.1687 mils is over the rollback rate of 5.4322 mils by 13.56%. For the general fund, combined millage rate of 4.9033 mils, which consists of the Board of County Commissioners, millage of 2.1614 mils, and the Charlotte County Sheriff Office millage of 2.7419 mils. For a total proposed budget for fiscal year '2324 of $229,958,768, and a planned fiscal year '2425 budget of $218,178,198. The capital projects fund with a millage rate of 1.2654 mils for a proposed fiscal year '2324 budget of $79,701,127, and a planned fiscal year '2425 budget of $66,743,979. For a total countywide proposed ad valorem budget of 6.1687 mils with a proposed fiscal year '2324 combined budget of $309,658,895, and a planned '2425 fiscal year budget of $284,922,177.
And Gordon, if you could go back to the proposed '2324 budget, you misspoke on that one. Just reread that one for me. You said 58, 658 instead of 659. So, 309, 659, 895.
Okay, I'll read it again. For a total countywide proposed budget for fiscal year '2324 of $309,659,895.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward, state your name for the record, and you have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Again, Sharon Pennio. What's the holdup on the federal funds? What's famous problem? Why are they restricting it? And I would like to know something about this.
We can't answer that during the public hearing, but I think we can get with you and get you some answers. It's a long story. It's federal government.
I think it's worth the time. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, understood. Anyone wishing to speak on a budget? Dave, you can come around front.
I had no idea by the agenda that we were gonna have this many time to speak. I know at least one Commissioner's mentioned that our budget isn't bloated. I can come up with a few things off the top of my head. I don't know how many more I'll come to while I'm speaking, but one of the costs are the expensive gateways we have, instead of just putting up a sign. instead of just putting up a sign. As people mentioned, the economy's going to, it's going to take, it's going to tank soon. And we don't need stuff like that. We need to do just what we need. We don't need to do all this extra beautification. Somebody else mentioned five secretaries. I know one of them makes 56,000-plus benefits for secretaries. Secretary across the street doesn't make that much. County secretaries make that much. County employees make more than the private sector, and the private sector's struggling. Let me think about, let's see, what else we got? Somebody mentioned something. We've got the, they're not water parks, they're splash pads. Why do we have splash pads? We've got to fix the parks. We need to fix the parks very minimally, just so they're safe. We don't have a lot of money right now. We don't need to waste money on stuff that we don't need that is not governmental. We need to spend it on only the needs, not the wants. I hear that all the time. Only wants, or only needs, not wants. There's all kinds of wants in our budget. And again, if I had the time to go through it, I don't. But if it mattered, I probably would. But it wouldn't matter. All I'm saying is you guys need to cut where you can cut right now because everyone's struggling, and we can't afford it.
Cap Pellegrino. I don't know if you're watching what's going on all across the world today. Maybe you're living in a little bubble. But I can tell you right now, it is going to crash, like he said. Supply chain is broken, okay? This Ukraine thing, all the money we're sending over there. You guys need to really start cutting. We don't need all this, you know, beautification. All right, we have people who are struggling that have fixed incomes. You don't understand that because you don't have fixed incomes, okay? We know how much everybody makes. It's nice, that's great for you, okay? But you have people out here struggling, okay? Older people too, that are struggling. It's like you really don't care. And I don't understand how you can sit there and everybody tell you what's going on, and you just totally just, you're oblivious to it. You don't care, you know? I've traveled the world when I was in the military. I've seen a lot of things, okay? I've seen a lot of third-world countries. And you know, we are headed that way, okay? You better wake up, okay? It's coming. All your nice little things, you're going to lose it because we are going to hit rock bottom. You're going to have nowhere to go. You're going to have a lot of pissed-off people. Again, there's elections coming up. I'm just going to remind you. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matt Canker. The planning ahead, I think that it might be worth anticipating, especially if you agree and you have the foresight in agreement with people who are speaking about the future problems. I would think you'd want to get ahead of the curve because it seems to be responsive when you're raising things a higher percentage. It's responsive to something that was a shortfall before. It makes it concerned, was it the lack of planning and distributing the cost increases over time? Were there functionality problems we didn't even address before? And that's why it's like, oh, gosh, we have this big problem. But it seems to be pretty dramatic. I have another little list here. I was suggested to read an email that has a list of bloated items here. Trespassing taxpayers for attempting to document the activities of their public officials seems like a waste of money, considering they're not only wasting money, they're literally violating rights at the taxpayer expense. That's a really big one. Stop the building war monuments is a legacy for, legacy item. This is not mine, I'm just going to read them off. This is your public input. Cut the expenses of security and policing public meetings, or extremely lower the budget of the commissioner's legal protection team and not constitutionally required things. Cut or eliminate code enforcement. Cut the new team hired to grovel for federal money that doesn't exist. Cut the salaries across the board and implement salary increase freezes. Increase deductibles for public employee insurance and get a cheaper plan. Build a planer in cheaper buildings for the government. One thing, I'm going to add my piece, this is kind of summarizing this. A lot of times, and someone said a year ago at the meeting, it just stuck with me, and it's true, is people want certain things. You're like, people expect a certain level of appearance or service, and it's totally true. And I can appreciate the position you're in when you're in government. But on the other hand, as you know, like when you're thinking about the federal government, you probably have this feeling most like, well, I don't really want that, or I want that. But then like, wow, that's like 40% of the budget or 3% of the budget. If you were to ask them, well, do you want it? And you want to pay this much money? And then you give them the total dollar amount, answers tend to change tremendously. So I think it might be something worth contemplating, even if you did it more ad hoc, anecdotal. If you surveyed people, would you be willing to pay this much money for, let's say, your most questioned 30 items? I bet you would have at least 90% say no. Just speculation. That's based on what I'm seeing. Of course, I'm talking to people publicly active, but that's 100% result. When I went to that hearing before, it was pretty universal. The people that were upset saying, when I asked these kind of questions, it was fresh at the time, and they were saying, oh, yeah, of course I want that. The follow-up question is, well, if you could save this percentage off your bill, would you still want to pay for that? They'd said no. So I think that might be a contemplation-worthy item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move close public hearing.
Second. Motion to second to close. Any opposition? Hearing on passes. Okay, Commissioners.
Okay, Ms. Chairman. I move a resolution adopting a tentative countywide millage levy for Charlotte County for fiscal year 2324 as read into the record by Mr. Burger.
Second. Motion to second, discussion.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on our budget real quick, just based on some of the comments. So we do do outreach with the public to see what their level of services are. And we have a performance-based budget. And we go through and we analyze the goals, the progress, and the accomplishments in meeting those levels of service. And I'll just give you a quick example of how important level of service is to our community. When COVID hit, we shut down a lot of things. People didn't have access to the parks. They didn't have access to the libraries and the programming we have. I was inundated with people demanding we provide these services. They didn't want cuts. They wanted their families, their kids, whatever programming we had. They wanted access to those things. We don't, we don't, we don't base our budget on things that we would like. We do community outreach and look at what's important to the community and the level of service that they want. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In order to address Ms. Pinio's question about FEMA, I would ask for Mr. Gordon Burger to come to the microphone and discuss the Charlie experience, if you could. And then don't forget about de-obligation because they gave us millions of dollars. And then years later, after it was all spent and we had all the records to do it, they said, you know what? We want our money back. So they made us fight again to keep our money. But if you could, Mr. Burger.
Yes, that was, they came back for an initial review after seven years, another review after 12 years. And at that point in time, because they had been ordered to claw back dollars, at one point, we're looking at us to give them back $12 million. Then it went down to 8 million. We kept fighting, down to 3 million. And finally, because of legislation that was passed and the case we were able to make, they backed off and we paid nothing. Currently, we have four expedited projects for over $100 million. What was initially supposed to happen was within 45 days, they would review those. We would get half of the money upfront, the other half after everything was validated. Out of those four obligated projects, 11 months later, one has been obligated. We've received $22 million on that one. They are now validating just that 50%. It will take forever for them to validate the whole amount to get the other 50%. The other three projects have not even been validated yet. Levels of review has three more levels of review to go through at FEMA, eight at the state.
Can you also just give us a real brief? That's our wonderful Ian experience right now. How long did it take for us to get the bills paid from 2004 when Charlie hit? How many years did it take to get all of that money? Because you had to front a whole bunch of money in 2004 and 2005.
Yeah, FEMA operated differently during Charlie. And I was not here, but that was part of the issue. They came in and gave us the money upfront and then came back later and tried to claw it back and de-obligate it. So it operated differently then and much, much more restrictive now. They basically, they validate pretty much 100% before they actually give you any dollars.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am, can't at this point in time. We have a motion, we have a second further discussion here. Hearing on, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, that passes.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move a resolution adopting a tentative countywide budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and approve a planned budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing no discussion, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, that passes.
Commissioners, moving on to our voted debt service fund, which is our environmentally sensitive lands fund. For the Series 2000, and take a moment to explain. This was voted through by the taxpayers of the county, voted .2 dedicated mils for Conservation Charlotte, which was, land was purchased. Debt service is being paid off on it. Once that debt service is paid off, this millage goes away. For the Series 2008 debt service fund, a voted millage rate of 0.2000 mils for proposed fiscal year 2324 budget of $5,939,285, and a planned fiscal year 2425 budget of $8,547,766. Commissioners, because this is voted, there is no need for a public hearing, but we allow public comment.
Yes. With that, we'll open up public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward.
I'm not sure if I'm going in my lane here, but I want to respond to the general crux of what I was saying before. I totally agree that people would want the things they paid for, and they expect they're going to continue to have to pay for. That's where the differentiation, excuse me, differentiation came when I talk to people often about these kind of things. I'm going to give you something maybe we can all feel together is that, let's say, I'm 42. If someone said to me, can you keep your money for Medicare, Social Security, you invested on your own, and you're responsible for it, we're not covering you, would you take it? Yes. If you ask someone who are paid in, can we take away your Social Security now? No, even though they really only pay a third and it's subsidized by two-thirds. A lot of people don't realize the nuance of that. I would take the one-third and sacrifice the two-thirds even. And a lot of people would be in my boat. Same thing with like an item like the library. Well, if you could save X in library as an individual item, probably wouldn't get the same response. But if you had a line item of 10, and it added up to 10%, they say, take it or leave it, 10% cut or those things? 90% cut, at least. Across party lines, by the way. That's Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, NPA, all of the above.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move forward.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the board, I move a resolution adopting a tentative Series 2008 GOB debt service fund and millage levy for Charlotte County for fiscal year 23, 2023, 2024.
Second. Motion to second, is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, is there opposition? Hearing no opposition, that passes.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the board, I move a resolution adopting a tentative Series 2008 GOB debt service fund budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and approve a planned budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second. Motion to second, discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burger, any idea? And if you don't have it today, just get it to us. I know this is probably coming in a lot higher than they had expected. Do we know when the pay-down rate is going to be for this? We've asked this before, but it's not going to be the full term. Or can we not prepay the, is this a bond that we're?
I know the term ends in 2008. I get them mixed up on whether or not these bonds are callable or not.
Yeah, it starts in 2008. But I'm saying, if, so if there's, if there's a set, I guess if there's a set time.
Yes.
And if we can't prepay it anyway, you're going to have enough revenue where it's going to stop. And we won't, even if it's got five more years on the .2 mils, we're going to stop, it's going to fall out of the budget because you've already got the money sitting somewhere waiting to pay it off over time. Correct, unless we can pay it off sooner.
Correct. And I'm quite sure we're going to have a workshop on this in the next year to determine how you want to handle this in terms of those excess funds, whether you could tail the millage early or do something with those dollars. Now, you're very constrained on what you can do with those dollars. And Jeanette and I have had numerous conversations on this, but I'm sure we'll be having a workshop in this next year for you to discuss that and make a determination.
Okay.
We're getting close.
Yeah, I mean, my thought would be, you know, where this was levied based on the vote of the public, .2 mils a year until it's paid off. At that point, you stop charging, you have the money, whether you can pay it off early or it sits there and you pay off the bond accordingly. That's restricted funds. You can't do anything with that.
Like I said, we need to have a workshop so that it can be explained clearly what your options are and when the timing is on it.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing on, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, that passes unanimously.
Commissioners, moving on to the Ad Valorem, the municipal service taxing units, or MSTUs. Hang with me here, Commissioners, because I, my eyes start crossing as I do this. So if I make a mistake, please let me know. For the Greater Charlotte Street Lighting District, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 0.2925 mils, which is a 14.98% rate of increase over the rollback of 0.2544 mils. The total proposed budget for the Greater Charlotte Street Light District is for fiscal year 2324, $16,212,500. And the planned budget for fiscal year 2425 is $15,122,717. For the Stump Pass dredging, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 0.1978 mils, which is a 14.01% rate of increase over the rollback of 0.1735 mils. The total proposed budget for Stump Pass dredging municipal service taxing unit is for the fiscal year 2324, $17,687,792. And the planned budget for fiscal year 2425 is $19,232,859. For Don Pedro Night Island Street and Drainage Unit, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 1.4410 mils, which is a 14.18% rate of increase over the rollback of 1.2620 mils. The total proposed budget for Don Pedro Night Island Street and Drainage Unit for fiscal year 2324 is $3,783,481. Planned budget for fiscal year 2425 is $3,746,465. For the Minnesota Key Street and Drainage Unit, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 0.7798 mils, which is a 15.73% rate of increase over the rollback of 0.6738 mils. The total proposed budget for Minnesota Key Street and Drainage Unit for fiscal year 2324 is $1,996,629. And the planned budget for fiscal year 2425 is $1,701,989. For the Charlotte County MSTU for Law Enforcement, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 2.4232 mils, which is a 14.24% rate of increase over the rollback of 2.1211 mils. The total proposed budget for the Charlotte County MSTU for Law Enforcement for fiscal year 2324 is $131,743,850. And the planned budget for fiscal year 2425 is $143,867,420. For the Sand Hill Municipal Service Taxing Unit, the proposed Ad Valorem tax for this district is 0.7062 mils, which is a 19.88% rate of increase over the rollback of 0.5891 mils. The total proposed budget for the Sand Hill Municipal Service Taxing Unit The total proposed budget for the Sand Hill Municipal Service Taxing Unit for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is one million, eighty-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. And the planned budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. The total for all the MSTUs for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is one-hundred-and-seventy-two-million, three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-one. The planned budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is, excuse me, one-hundred-and-eighty-four-million, nine-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars.
Very good, thank you. Questions? Hearing none, we'll open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward, state your name for the record, you have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Dave Kalen, Charlotte County resident. Twenty-twenty-one, you guys disbanded our MSBU. I would ask this Board to bring back that MSBU, but allow the residents of the Charlotte Ranchettes to direct that, rather than use the county commissioners of Public Works. Allow us to at least collect the funds to maintain our thirty-eight miles of road. Since you guys left, our roads have actually been in better condition than they ever have. The citizens have stepped up. We just need a means to collect a little money, to pay for a little material, or even cleaning out our drainage. We've come together as a community, I'm just asking you, has the ability to collect a little funds, to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move to closed public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close, any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move a resolution adopting a tentative millage rate to be levied within the Greater Charlotte Street Lighting District, Stump Pass Dredging Municipal Service Taxing Unit, Don Pedro Night Island Street and Drainage Unit, Minnesota Key Street and Drainage Unit, Charlotte County MSTU for Law Enforcement, and Sand Hill Municipal Service Taxing Unit for Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second. Motion second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move a resolution adopting a tentative budget for Greater Charlotte Street Lighting District, Stump Pass Dredging Municipal Service Taxing Unit, Don Pedro Night Island Street and Drainage Unit, Minnesota Key Street and Drainage Unit, Charlotte County MSTU for Law Enforcement, and Sand Hill Municipal Service Taxing Unit for Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four, and approve a planned budget for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second. Motion second, discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, that passes unanimously.
Commissioners, the last section is the non-ad valorem funds and the municipal service benefit units. Obviously, you've already set the rates for the benefit units during the first public hearing. There are no millage rates for any of these, so there's only one resolution, and that is the total budget. For the special revenue funds, non-MSPU, the subtotal for the special revenue funds, non-MSPUs, for a proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget is four-hundred-and-fifty-four-million, four-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And a planned fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget of four-hundred-and-sixty-two-million, six-hundred-and-sixty, six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, ninety-six dollars. For the enterprise and internal service funds, proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is sixty-seven, six, no, sorry. Not easy, after a while. The proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, six-hundred-and-seventy-one-million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, and a planned fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget of six-hundred-and-sixty-million, two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. For the special revenue funds, MSBU's, a proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget of two-hundred-and-seventy-three-million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-six, and a planned fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget of two-hundred-and-fifty-million, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. The total for all of the non-ad valorem fund budgets for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is one-billion, four-hundred-million, ninety-nine-thousand, and nine dollars, and a planned fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget of one-billion, three-hundred-and-seventy-three-million, one-hundred-and-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars.
Thank you. Sir, any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on these items may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one from the public rising, and move to closed public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close, any opposition? Hearing none, that passes.
Mr. Chairman, a confirmation from Mr. Berger. Moving this resolution, of course, it's tentative, it will be, when we come back on the nineteenth of September, it will be reduced relative to the Suncoast Waterway change that we made this evening.
Yes, not just Suncoast Waterway, but also the Fire Fund and Charlotte, West Charlotte Stormwater. We will have changes from tonight's budget to the second public hearing, where we will reflect the budgetary impacts of the action you took under the MSBU's.
Very good. Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move a resolution adopting the tentative budgets for the remaining special revenue funds, debt service funds, enterprise funds, and MSBU funds for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, totaling one-billion, four-hundred-million, ninety-nine-thousand, and nine dollars, and approve a planned budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, totaling one-billion, three-hundred-and-seventy-three-million, one-hundred-and-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, that passes unanimously.
Commissioners, we'll have the second public hearing on September nineteenth, again here.
Very good. With that, our business is concluded, we are adjourned.
My battery went dead in this. Yeah, I had to use my phone there.